Let me welcome everyone to the June 9th, 2020 public... June 9th, that's the wrong one.
Should have gotten the 16th.
I'm looking for Tyrone to see.
Should have gotten the 16th, it's there.
Ahhh, let me see. I don't see the one for the 16th.
Commissioner Powell, did you receive it?
Yeah, she got it, she talked about it earlier.
Okay.
Um, let me check, let me check something else. I did a search, didn't get it. Let me try another source. Hold on.
I've just resent it to your email, Chair Dunlap.
Okay, I'll wait for it to get here. If everybody would just hold on, hold on.
Holding.
There it is. All right, let's start this all over again. Welcome, greetings. Welcome to our June 16th, 2020 meeting of the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners. The board continues to conduct business remotely due to our ongoing COVID-19 state of emergency. The public may join the following, the public may join and follow the meeting by doing it online at mechenc.gov. You may also follow it on YouTube or follow us on Twitter or call in to the following number. And enter the following access code. Again, the meeting tonight, we're having each board member identify him or herself so that the records will reflect who is present and participating in the meeting. I will introduce myself and then call upon each of my colleagues to do the same as I call out their respective district. I am George Dunlap, I am participating remotely. I represent the people of District 3 and I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Board. Next, we'll introduce our at-large Commissioners, Commissioner Pat Cawthon.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Pat Cawthon, County Commissioner-at-Large.
And I did get your note earlier. Commissioner O'Scarborough.
O'Scarborough, County Commissioner-at-Large.
Commissioner Trevor Fuller.
Good evening, this is Trevor Fuller, I'm honored to serve as a County Commissioner-at-Large, representing all the more than 1 million people who live in Mecklenburg County and I'm participating in our meeting tonight remotely, welcome.
Commissioner District 1.
Good evening, this is Commissioner Elaine Powell, I represent District 1, which is all of North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. I also serve as Vice Chair and I am participating remotely, thank you.
Commissioner District 2.
This is Commissioner Vilma De Leek, representing the most powerful district in the county, welcome to all.
Commissioner District 4.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Jarrell and I represent the people of District 4 and I'm participating remotely.
Commissioner District 5.
Good evening, my name is Susan Harden and I represent the 5th District, I am participating remotely.
And Commissioner District 6.
Good evening, I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell and I am participating remotely from beautiful District 6.
Okay, for the record, all Commissioners have acknowledged their presence for the meeting, therefore we do have a call. I will now ask the following persons to introduce themselves. Clerk to the Board.
Good evening, Emily Kunzie, Clerk to the Board.
Our Deputy Clerk.
Good evening, this is Christine Smith, Deputy Clerk.
Our County Manager.
Good evening, this is Dina DiOrio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
And our County Attorney.
Good evening, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
All right, so before we get to tonight's homekeeping rules, our invocation tonight will be done by Commissioner Powell, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Powell.
Good evening. I will just again have a simple prayer. I pray for unity, I pray for compassionate leadership committed to building unity in Mecklenburg County. I pray that we will engage from a place in our hearts with love, recognizing each other as brothers and sisters. I pray that we each have an increased willingness to connect with each other and respectfully listen to and consider different perspectives. We have problems to solve. I pray for leadership dedicated to working together as we move forward on this journey, amen.
Amen, would you now say the Pledge of Allegiance with me? Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Since we are still conducting remote meetings, there are few housekeeping rules to which we must adhere to to govern our actions as a board so that the board minutes are accurate. If a Commissioner wishes to leave the meeting, please ask for a point of personal privilege, state your privilege so that the minutes will capture the actions and attendance of each member. When a Commissioner returns, please announce your return when it is most convenient, do so. Since no one is physically present, when a matter is put on the floor for debate, I will have to call upon each Commissioner to ask whether or not they have comments. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking and please refrain from speaking while one another, while someone else is speaking or interrupting another speaker. May I also suggest that you end your comments by saying, "This concludes my comments." If a Commissioner does not have any comments, please state, "I have no comments" or "I do not wish to speak on this matter." When a motion is made, the movement needs to identify him or herself and does the same for the individual who seconds the motion. The Chair will verbally repeat the motion and then call for the vote and the Clerk will state the results. So as we begin, there have been two items pulled from our consent agenda. Item 206196, 206201, are there any other consent items to be pulled? All right, hearing none, we'll move to our first category for tonight's meeting, awards and recognition. And before we do our first proclamation, I, I, I confess that I have been having difficulty dealing with the fact that for eight minutes and 46 seconds, a police officer had his knee in George Floyd's neck. As people watched, there were children who watched and a lot of people are really devastated. But some of us can't even imagine what that feels like and don't understand how long a period of time it was. So before we start tonight's proclamation, Madam Clerk, set the timer for eight minutes and 46 seconds as we reflect on what happened. Thank you.
Chair Dunlap, that was time.
Thank you so much. So the first recognition tonight is a proclamation declaring racism as a public health crisis. Commissioner Mark Jarrell will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and before I read the proclamation, I want to take a second to say thank you to you for your leadership and to this board and our staff for just a continued commitment as it relates to addressing the disparities and and the focus on trying to change health outcomes for communities of color. As elected officials, nothing is more important than the health and well-being of our residents, and we certainly know that racism is a driving force of the social determinants of health and a barrier to health equity. And today, we set in motion the acknowledgement that racism goes beyond the action of an individual, but it's more about the systems that exist and create those disproportional outcomes for people of color. And this shift in focus and acknowledgement of these facts with this proclamation is critical as we move forward, and I am honored to be able to read this proclamation tonight. And it reads as follows. "Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, proclamation declaring racism a public health crisis. Whereas the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners has identified reducing racial disparity as a critical priority and essential to an effective systemic response to delivering health and human services in Mecklenburg County. And whereas racism unfairly disadvantages Black and Brown individuals and communities while unfairly giving advantages to other individuals and communities, and Mecklenburg County's collective prosperity depends upon the equitable access to opportunity for every resident. And whereas racism has produced and perpetuates poverty through intentional and unintentional policies that create barriers to economic mobility and is a social system with multiple dimensions, individual racism that is internalized or interpersonal, and systemic racism that is institutional or structural. And whereas criminal justice practices have caused deep disparities, harm, and mistrust, African-American residents of Mecklenburg County are eight times more likely to die of homicide, and seventy-three percent of homicide victims were African-American in Mecklenburg County. And whereas a growing body of literature shows that social determinants, otherwise known as the conditions in which an individual is born and in which he or she lives, works, or recreates, are key drivers of health inequities. For generations, communities of color have faced vast disparities in job opportunities, income, and inherited family wealth. They are less likely to have housing security, access to quality schools, healthy food, and green spaces. This involves systemic racism, all of which can undermine mental and physical well-being. And whereas, in addition, it is well documented that racism itself has an adverse impact on health, chronic stress caused by discrimination can trigger a cascade of adverse health outcomes from high blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes, immunodeficiency, and accelerated aging, all of which are high in the African-American community. There is also evidence suggesting that racism endured by Black mothers contributes to the high maternal and infant mortality rate. Whereas in Mecklenburg County, the COVID-19 pandemic has made visible and intensified racial health disparities, with Black and Brown communities comprising fifty-seven percent of all COVID-19 cases and forty-one point two percent of coronavirus deaths. And whereas Blacks are twice as likely to not have health insurance, three times more likely to experience chronic diseases, and seventy percent of new HIV infections. And whereas in 2006, the Board of County Commissioners received a report and recommendation on a call to action to eliminate health disparities in Mecklenburg County, yet the rates of disparity have widened. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners believes that racism can form the basis for a public health crisis affecting our entire county and should be treated with the urgency and funding of a public health crisis. Looking at racism in this way offers legislators, health officials, and others an opportunity to analyze data and discuss how to dismantle or change problematic institutions. Mecklenburg County will seek to promote racial equity through policies approved by the Board of County Commissioners, and will encourage other local, state, and national entities to recognize racism as a public health crisis as well. This sixteenth day of June 2020, signed George Dunlap, Chair, Mecklenburg, Board of County Commissioners. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Fuller.
Okay, proclamation was moved by Commissioner Jarrell, seconded by Commissioner Fuller. At this time, I'll conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell, how do you?
Yes.
Commissioner Leek?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And Chairperson, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you for that. I will, at this time, just pause in the event that someone would like to make comments. I know Commissioner Jarrell did a great job in explaining all of that, but let me just pause, and I'll go down the line. Commissioner Powell?
I would just add to the list of equity that environmental protection and access to parks, I would have included that. And that's all I'd like to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Leek?
Let me first say thank you to our Chairperson for his recognition of an event that took eight minutes and forty-six seconds. And then for it to be followed, asking this board to do something that it has not done yet and hopefully will do, is to protect the people of Mecklenburg County through the means by which we service the people of Mecklenburg County. So I say to Mr. Mark Jarrell, thank you for affording this community to hear from a Commissioner who happens to be a Black male, who's an endangered species in this country today. And I pray that through the efforts of this board and through the efforts of all in America and abroad, will address and bring a change to all of these issues that confront us. And I say again, thank you. I'm happy to serve on a board that can step forward and declare those issues and problems that we have, which is racism, and we've talked about it year after year after year. So again, thank you, Mr. Mark Jarrell, who happens to be a young Black man who brings this proclamation to us. I too second the motion.
Commissioner Harden?
Thank you, Chairman, and I think that this is probably one of the most important proclamations we've ever adopted. And I think that one of the most important and effective things that we can do to improve the health and human services of our community is to, you know, stop racism and mitigate racism. And so I think I appreciate this board so much, and I really believe that that this proclamation sets us on the right path. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very, very proud to support this proclamation, and I just wanted to say that as part of the research that some of us did on creating the proclamation, I learned, and it's mentioned in the proclamation, that Mecklenburg County already created a task force in 2006. And they created a report called, and this is the title of it, okay? Eliminating Health Disparities: A Call to Action. And yet, we know that the disparities have only widened in the last fourteen years. And so as we make this proclamation, and it has my full support, I really want us to figure out how we can make this proclamation have real meaning, how it can have real teeth, how it can have a real action plan with it. And I know that probably some great steps came out of the last call to action. I'm not denying that. Probably some good things, maybe like Village Heartbeat and other things might have come from that work. But what will we do differently now to make this a change moment for our community? Yes, we have put meaningful dollars in this FY21 budget, but we really have to remain focused on changing our systems. And so I just want to say that I am so proud to be part of this board, and I really look forward to the work that we can all do together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the eight minutes and forty-six seconds where we could reflect on the horror and the atrocity in Minneapolis and the loss of the life of Mr. George Floyd. And thank you, Commissioner Jarrell, for reading this proclamation. I would just say that I think the important thing for the community is not the proclamation, but it is the policies that we will create going forward. And I think that we need to focus on the policies to, as Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell talked about, the action. So that is my that is my wish, the policies. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Fuller?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your leading us to pause for those eight minutes and forty-six seconds and the the crushing impact of how long that is. And making real for us what became fatally real for George Floyd, who lost his life in those eight minutes and forty-six seconds at the hands of the law, the government. And so to follow that with this proclamation is so appropriate. And it's really not possible to overstate the importance of what this proclamation means. This is really a declaration of Mecklenburg County that we regard racism as so serious that we are declaring it a public health crisis because we know, all of us know, that racism goes so deep to the core of our nation's very existence. Racism is the original sin of America. And when you think about the pernicious effects of that, the violence that has come with it, the deprivation that persists, the legacy of slavery and of Jim Crow, all of those things still with us today. And we see these events like what happened to George Floyd as a reminder to us that it has not left us. And so what we're doing today is in our bailiwick. It's in our sphere of influence. And while we might not have sphere of influence. And while we might not have direct control over the criminal justice process, we are responsible for addressing the conditions that lead to African Americans and others of color who come in contact with the criminal justice system. We can't forget that these social determinants are what lead people, lead people like George Floyd to even be in contact with the police officer. And so let's not forget also that this proclamation is for everybody. It's not just for African Americans. It's not just for people who are discriminated against. It's for everyone because everyone benefits when racism is removed from our expenditure of funds, from our attention, from our focus. And by making this proclamation, this declaration, we now authorize resources to be marshaled to address this question. It's the threshold to us being able to, let's face it, spend money to remove this public health crisis. So I don't want anybody to think this is just words on a page. This is something really important that we're doing. And for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion right now that we send a copy of this proclamation to every single county in North Carolina, that we send a copy to every single legislator in the General Assembly and that we send a copy to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for the purpose that everyone in this state will know what Mecklenburg County has done, that we can lead the charge for other counties in our state to adopt a similar proclamation. And indeed, that our county and our state can be a model for the rest of the country. So that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Leek, District Two, second that motion if I'm in order.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Leek. Any discussion? Go in order, Commissioner Powell, discussion on the motion.
This is Commissioner Powell. No discussion.
Commissioner Leek?
No discussion, self-explanatory.
Commissioner Jarrell?
No, no discussion, Mr. Chairman. I support it.
Commissioner Harden?
No discussion. I support.
Commissioner McDowell?
No discussion. I support.
Commissioner Cuthem?
No discussion.
Commissioner? Commissioner Scarborough?
No discussion. It speaks for itself.
All right, Mr. Fuller, last word. Is there another word?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll conduct the roll call vote. How do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Leek?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes, Madam Clerk, the results?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, thank you. So we'll go back to the order of the day, which was the discussion comments relative to the proclamation. Commissioner Scarborough?
You want more discussion? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying you have the opportunity, if you would like.
No, I've been there, done that. I was in a whole lot of this stuff in the sixties and seventies. But I think for the sake of time and what we're doing, I have no more discussion.
All right, Commissioner Jarrell?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I'd like to say is it's, you know, when the public hears someone read a proclamation, it's really an honor to read it on behalf of everyone that sits on this board. And I just really want to reinforce and thank everyone that was a sponsor of this and that really helped craft it and helped us weave it through from staff to my colleagues. And when I reached out to folks that I reached out to, everyone unequivocally supported us doing this without hesitation. And I just, I just want the public to understand that this is not a one-person deal, but this is a joint effort. It was nine-zero. And I want my colleagues to know how much it is an honor that I was able to read this proclamation. So thank you to each and every one of you.
All right, and finally, I would say that it is not just a proclamation for this board. My sincere desire is that our corporate partners will embrace all that has been said in this proclamation and help us make those things be a reality for Mecklenburg County. All right? Thank you. So at this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 26224, which is the Order of the Hornet Induction. I am so proud tonight to be able to award this order to our chancellor of my university. And I will admit that what I'm about to share is kind of long. But I think it needs to be said because for a long time now, people in our community have heard the name Dr. Dubois, but didn't know much about him. So as he departs our community, I think it's important for us to be able to know as much as we can so that we can reflect on the work that he has provided at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte during his career here. So before we go to the background and justification, Dr. Dubois' career in higher education spans for more than forty years. As a first-generation college student, he earned a bachelor's degree in political science from the University of California, Davis, and a master's and doctorate degree in political science from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Dr. Dubois returned to the University of California, Davis, to start his career in academia as an assistant professor, rising through faculty and administrative ranks to hold various positions, including full professor and associate vice chancellor for academic programs. Dr. Dubois was recruited to UNC Charlotte in 1991, where he spent the next five and a half years as provost and vice chancellor for academic affairs. On March 18th, 2005, Dr. Dubois was named UNC Charlotte's fourth chancellor. After a fifteen-year tenure as chancellor, Dr. Dubois will retire June 30th, 2020, having led the university through a forty-three percent growth in enrollment and expansion in academic programs, the implementation of diversity-related initiatives, growth in research funding and the construction and renovation of campus facilities. It was under his leadership that football was added to the university's athletics offerings. Our entire city cheered on the Forty-Niners in their first-ever bowl appearance last December. As chancellor, Dubois helped the university build a strong partnership with the greater Charlotte area to ensure the vitality of our growing region, and his dedicated leadership placed UNC Charlotte on a remarkable growth trajectory with growth with enrollment reaching nearly thirty thousand students as the leading urban research institution focused on the economic, educational, environmental, health and social needs of our region. Chancellor Dubois led the largest facility construction and renovation programs in the university's history, exceeding 1.2 billion, including the Dubois Center at UNC Charlotte Center City, located adjacent to Mecklenburg County's beautiful First Ward Park. A new recreation facility, a comprehensive energy research building, as well as a new science building that will come online in the spring of 2021 are among the major buildings added over the last fifteen years. Chancellor Dubois collaborated with elected officials and the Charlotte Area Transit System to make possible the construction of a light rail line from UNC Charlotte to the UNC Charlotte campus, from Center City, Charlotte, to the UNC Charlotte campus, increasing the connection and opportunities for partnership between the university and the rest of the city. He partnered with Central Piedmont Community College to launch the Forty-Niners Next Program, which creates a clear path for community college students to enroll at UNC Charlotte. And he worked with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools to create two early colleges at UNC Charlotte, one for students interested in STEM fields and another for those interested in teaching. Chancellor Dubois has been recognized regionally and nationally as a leader in higher education, achieving many awards and accolades throughout his distinguished forty-year career in higher education, including the City of Charlotte Mayor's Award, the Charlotte Magazine Charlotteian of the Year, and the inclusion on the Charlotte Business Journal list of most admired CEOs. He has also received many community recognitions, including Charlotte World Affairs Council, World Citizen Award in 2016, the Case District Three Inclusion and Diversity Leadership Award in 2015, the Leo M. Lambert Engaged Leader Award in 2014, the Belt Innovation of Diversity Award in 2013, the Charlotte Energy Leadership Award in 2013, the Charlotte Cornerstone Award 2012 for Positive Economic Impact, the Creative Thinker Award 2012 for UNC Charlotte Center City, and the Charlotte Regional Partnership Jerry Award in 2009 for public sector contributions to economic Dubois. Chancellor Dubois and his wife Lisa Dubois have three children, Logan, Taylor and Ali, and are the grandparents of two boys, Brooks and Leo, who they are looking forward to spending time with in retirement. So Dr. Dubois, now that you've been recognized from across the world, we thought it fitting that we also recognize you here at home. It has been said that the most difficult place to be recognized is to be recognized at home. And so we would not have you leave this community without recognizing you. So at this time, I will read the Order of the Hornet. The Order of the Hornet was established in 1972. It is bestowed by the Board of County Commissioners on persons who have displayed valor or high order of the service uniquely and specifically to the citizens of Mecklenburg County. This is the highest honor bestowed by the board. The Order of the Hornet was founded in the spirit of early Mecklenburg patriots who signed the Mecklenburg Declaration of Independence on May 20th, 1775, and proclaimed the county's freedom from Britain more than a year after the United States declared Declaration of Independence was signed. Those early patriots valiantly fought for their independence during the revolution and gave Lord Cornwallis such difficulty during his occupation of Charlotte that he turned the town a hornet's nest of rebellion. Because Chancellor Philip Dubois reflects the honor, strength and fierce American patriotism that so strung Lord Cornwallis, he was recommended for the membership in the Order of the Hornet. The Order of the Hornet, know all persons by those present that Chancellor Philip L. Dubois is hereby inducted into the Order of the Hornet of Mecklenburg County. All right. In testimony thereof, we hereby confer the rights and privileges pertaining thereto and affix the seal of Mecklenburg County on this sixteenth day of June in the year 2020, signed by our chair, George Dunlap. That is my motion. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that, Chairman. This is Susan Harden.
All right, moved by Commissioner Dunlap, seconded by Commissioner Harden. So before we'll take, let's have discussion. And I know everybody wants to say their farewells because he's already gone. So Susan, since you were seconded, we'll let you start first.
Well, I appreciate being able to go first because, you know, as many, I mean, everybody knows I'm a professor at UNC Charlotte and I can just, I want to say to Phil, just what an incredible impact you have made, you know, certainly on my life, in the life of our constituents and in the life of our students and the lives of our faculty and staff. I mean, when I think of, when I think of how many students you have personally facilitated to reach their dreams and to go on and serve, you know, have really incredible jobs in this community because of the foundations you put in place as chancellor. And, you know, just the jobs that you helped create in this community for faculty and staff is incredible. And what a beautiful campus you helped design and create. I mean, it's just, it really is remarkable. So many of my students, you should know that, for people who should know this, that twenty-eight percent of our students are first-generation students and seventy-six percent receive financial aid. And when they come on campus, it's, you can just see the pride that when you live and study in a place that beautiful, what that does to the spirit of a person. It really lifts them. And so you've just meant so much to this community. You meant a lot to me personally. And so thank you for everything you've done. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. And our other UNC connection, Susan Rodriguez McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I am an alum, a proud alum of UNC Charlotte. And I would like to congratulate the chancellor and say thank you so much for what you've done for the university. And I look forward to hearing about how it goes in retirement. So best of luck to you and thank you for all of your work. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Fuller?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to say my congratulations to Dr. Dubois. And I served as chair at a lot of events. Chair is called upon to speak at several events with Bill as a speaker. And I never wanted to follow Phil. Reason I never wanted to follow him is because he always had humor for people that had people rolling in the aisles when he spoke. So it's like, how can you follow that? Even, you know, despite the majesty of the county commissioner, who would care after Phil Dubois spoke? So, Phil, I just want to tell you how
how proud I am that you have been with us for these last decade and a half. And how important you have been to our entire community. And I would say to our entire state. You are, if not the senior chancellor in the UNC system. I believe you are. And what leadership that has meant to our state. The discipline that you brought to the job, the dignity that you brought to the job really can't be overstated and you have very big shoes to fill. No pun intended. And I just, I couldn't think of anybody who is more deserving of the Order of the Hornet than you, Phil Dubois. You have left quite a legacy here. And although I'm not an alum of the school, UNC Charlotte is in my heart. um, UNC Charlotte is in my heart. I have watched as the university has grown, even in the time that I've been in Charlotte, although I've been here over twenty years, but, uh, but I've seen the university grow, and it's because of your foresight, your insight, your, um, enthusiasm. Um, I remember the day when we celebrated the opening of the, um, Blue Line Extension, and how proud you were of the fact that that, uh, that line came right on campus, um, and that wouldn't have happened without you. And so, that's what I mean when I talk about legacy that you have left for us. So, we're gonna miss you. Um, we're gonna miss you personally, but we're gonna miss you more, um, in terms of the impact that you have left on this community, this growing community that you have been so much, uh, an important part of. So, I wish you the very best. I wish you good luck. I pray for you and for your family, uh, your dear wife, long-suffering wife, who, who I got to know through ASC, and her contributions to, uh, public art and art in general in our community. So, we're gonna miss you both. Um, uh, we love you, and we, we pray your continued, uh, success, and that you, uh, find, uh, good fortune in your retirement. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Scarborough.
And, uh, Dr. Dubois, I, I'm, I'm excited about UNC Charlotte because you've done an excellent job out there. I mean, before, before I knew anything about Charlotte, I knew that we were, we were getting a new, um, chancellor, so I appreciate that, and that's all I need to say, much has been said. Thank you, much success to you.
Commissioner Coffin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Phil, we are certainly gonna miss you. It seems like yesterday that you arrived, and, uh, we, you were filling some big shoes of your predecessors, uh, but oh, boy, did you do that. And you were there at the university on the best of days, and you were there on the worst of days, and you were able to bring the school together and help them during those difficult times, and you were the reason, I think, our whole community was able to stay together and support UNC Charlotte during those very difficult days, uh, a couple of years ago. So, I thank you for all that you have done, and I do want to recognize your secret weapon, your amazing wife Lisa, and all that she has done, not only as your partner and your supporter, but all that she has done, uh, in the community. Mr. Fuller mentioned her valuable contributions and leadership in the arts, but she also did amazing work with children, especially over the holidays, and, um, was able to have trucks and trucks of wonderful toys and neat clothes and bicycles for, uh, needy children, and that was always a big passion of hers, and it was very contagious. So, I, I really think she was your secret weapon the whole time, and, um, we were blessed to have you as long as we did, but your legacy of the two of you will last forever, and I wish you success and happiness in Georgia, and always know that we will, you are in our thoughts and prayers, and I thank you. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Powell.
I just want to say congratulations, and thank you for your commitment to education. Congratulations, thank you.
Commissioner Leake.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me first say thank you for the opportunity to say congratulations that you've reached a period in your life where you're young enough to move away and to retire, and at least go to bed when you get ready and get up when you please. I just needed to say that you are receiving the highest honor from this board, so that means a lot to this community to do this, that we have been given the opportunity to thank you for providing what we call a quality education for all children who have been a part of the university. I remember when that university was beginning to become started, but you have taken it to the highest level, and I would hate to be the person who would have to come behind you, sir, but I'm so happy that board members did not forget your dedicated wife, your helpmate, who made you and helped you to become what you are and who you are. So, to her, hats off to her, and to say to her to continue her journey, and thank you for allowing her, you, her to be herself. So, to the children and the grandchildren, welcome their grandfather and their grandmother to retirement because they will be skating and walking carefully and doing all the right things for the right people at the right time. And one thing I can say to you, sir, once an educator, always an educator, and all that you have, please disseminate it some more within the confines of the community where you find yourself. God bless and thank you.
Commissioner Jurick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, i- it's really interesting in how ma- how many of us have such close ties to the university. My wife is a graduate as well, and so, I have, uh, extremely close ties. It is, uh, I want to just take a moment to say congratulations, uh, on this, uh, recognition, and I want to say thank you for all of your, your tremendous contributions to our community and, uh, and, and hosting me and, uh, when we were able to come out there when we were, uh, first elected to this board, and, uh, we had a wonderful time, and it was, um, a great experience to meet you and your team, and I just, uh, I pray and, and hope that you enjoy retirement, which I'm sure you will, and again, thank you so much.
And so, uh, before we conduct our vote, let me just say finally that, um, I owe UNC Charlotte a debt of gratitude. Quick story, um, I was one of those high school students who wanted nothing else to do with school after I finished. I ended up going into the Marine Corps, got the GI Bill, but I still didn't want to use it. Then, when I realized that I could make money by going to school, I went to CPCC, and I did that and got two, uh, degrees from CPCC. And someone suggested that I go to UNC Charlotte to further my education, and I went. I had to take an admissions exam, and I flunked it, and I was encouraged to go back, and I did, and I took the test again, and I flunked it. That's when I realized that I didn't test well, but I was fortunate enough to run into a professor who said to me that you just seem like the right kind of person who I believe will do this. And what he did for me was, he gave me an opportunity to be admitted as a conditional student, and said to me that if you do well on these first two classes, we'll admit you as a full student, and that's what I did. And so, I finished with a Bachelor of Science in Correctional Science, and that motivated me to go even higher, and in two thousand and three, I received my master's, um, and I couldn't have been prouder. So, Dr. Dubois, thank you for all that you've done for the university, thank you for what you've done for our community. To you and Lisa, we wish you the best. I, I know you both will keep each other smiling, so I just wish you the best as you move to your new location. So, this time, we're gonna conduct the roll call vote. Um, uh, you've already heard the motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner, uh, Harden. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes, with flying colors.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes, aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, Dr. Dubois, you have been officially inducted, so this time you need to make some comments.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, thank you. As the early part of your meeting reflected, these are sober and difficult times for our community, and so, I appreciate the time you've taken out of your meeting to thank Lisa and thank me, and we're very, um, moved. We've been down here in Georgia about five weeks because we've been conducting the university by remote control as you've been conducting your commission meetings, and so far, we're getting along. Lisa said for some time she didn't know that she wanted twice the husband and half the money, but we're doing fine, and we have just thirteen more days to go before Chair and Gabor, Gabor will come in and take my place, probably in about the third week of July. I appreciate your unanimous vote because you already sent me the plaque, and I wasn't gonna return it. I've got this very spiffy golden hornet here in a, in a glass block, which I think is very attractive, and we'll have a proud place in my home office here in Greensboro, Georgia. You know, the partnership with the county has been broad and deep for the past fifteen years. I, you've already reflected on some of those. Um, the county was very much there on April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. A Mecklenburg medic was spectacular in responding to the scene of our shootings. Uh, more recently, we've been working with County Commissioner, excuse me, County Manager Diorio and Director Harris on the COVID-nineteen response. Uh, maybe our greatest accomplishment together was the redevelopment of First Ward and the creation of the First Ward Park. Uh, and of course, our graduates are all throughout the county and on the commission, and you sponsor many, many internships for our students, which we deeply appreciate. You, you take so many of those students and give them a chance, and that matters to us. You know, the hornet's nest is a powerful symbol of Mecklenburg County, Mecklenburg history, and it's often an apt descriptor of the job of a chancellor, so I'm gonna wear it as a badge of honor, and I thank you, uh, commissioners and Mr. Chairman, and I hope your meeting goes well because thus far, I really appreciate what you've done tonight.
Well, thank you so much, and, and let me apologize to our county manager because I intended to give her an opportunity to, to share some words too, because you two have worked so well together. Deana, uh, if you'd like to, please.
I, I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it has been an absolute delight and pleasure, uh, to work with Phil, um, and to, to work with Lisa. I always say that the best parties in town are held at the Bissell House, um, and, uh, just everything that you've done for the community, the projects that we've worked on, you've been such a collaborative partner, um, and we've been able to do some amazing things, so you will be, uh, you will be missed, uh, but I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being a good friend and being a supporter, um, and helping us, uh, do some amazing things here in Mecklenburg County, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Deana. I, I should mention, George, as I leave, uh, I have two children, Taylor and Ally, still living in Charlotte, so we'll be, uh, haunting, haunting the streets of Charlotte fairly frequently in, in the years to come.
Well, thank you for that. All right, let us move on to our next item. It's a proclamation, um, sponsored by Commissioner Coffin, but I understand Commissioner Leake is going to read that proclamation.
Are you ready for me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Let me read this proclamation, and I want to thank our dear friend, Pat Coffin, who is at large recognizing one of our former members of this great board, in the name of Glenn Blaisdell, who was born March thirty-first, nineteen twenty-seven, in Boston, Massachusetts, to the late Clifford and Margarita Blaisdell. And whereas Mr. Blaisdell enlisted in the U.S. Navy at the young age of seventeen, and he selfishly served his country and the county, and he served the Philippine, in the Philippines during World War Two. And whereas Mr. Blaisdell attended night school at the University of Georgia while working full-time and receiving degrees in accounting and law. And whereas in nineteen sixty-seven, Mr. Blaisdell moved to Charlotte, North Carolina, to work for Mecklenburg County, where he served in several roles, including county accountant, director of finance, and from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty, I mean nineteen eighty, as county manager of Mecklenburg County. And whereas Mr. Blaisdell took great pride in his work for Mecklenburg County and was a great asset to this great county. In the year of May fifth, twenty twenty, Mr. Blaisdell died at the age of ninety-three. And he never stopped learning, that's the dear thing about those who began to get the light bulb of education. Whereas Mr. Blaisdell was preceded by, in death by his wife and his beloved cat, Pumpkin, and is survived by a son, his daughter-in-law Glenda, his grandson Morgan, and Morgan's wife, two children, Avery Sharp Blaisdell and Sharp Blaisdell, his granddaughter, uh, Kathleen Blaisdell and his daughter. Whereas Mr. Blaisdell loved his family, especially his children, and also his grandchildren and his great-grandchildren, who all loved and admired him in return. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg County Commissioners honor the life and legacy of Glenn Chamberlain Blaisdell, and hereby proclaim Wednesday, June the seventeenth, twenty twenty, as Glenn Chamberlain Blaisdell Day, and that is signed this day, June the sixteenth, twenty twenty, by the chairperson, George Dunlap, Chairman of the County Board of Mecklenburg Commissioners, and submitted by our good friend, Pat Coffin. And thank you for affording me to read this, and hope you're feeling better, Pat. So moved, Mr. Chairman, to receive this proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Fuller.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Leake, seconded by Commissioner Fuller. At this time, I'll conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin?
Aye, and thank you, Commissioner Leake, for reading it.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes, aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item twenty sixty-two nineteen, proclamation by Commissioner Leake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the board, and most of all, Mr. Mark Jarrell, for leading us off with his proclamation, you know, specifically with racism, a health crisis in Mecklenburg County. So, to this board and to this community, thank you for affording me this opportunity. Whereas George Perry Floyd Junior was born in Fayetteville, North Carolina, on October the fourteenth, nineteen seventy-four, and was raised in the city of Houston, Texas. And whereas Mr. Floyd was educated through the Houston School System and graduated from Jack Yates High School, where he played on both the basketball and the football team and was a star tight, he was a star tight end on the football team as a player. And whereas Mr. Floyd attended... And whereas Mr. Floyd attended South Florida Community College and played for the basketball team as a center and power forward. And whereas Mr. Floyd left Houston and was embracing a fresh start on life in Minneapolis, Minnesota, where he worked as a security support person and at the Salvation Army Harbor Light Center and other places in the city of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Whereas on Monday, May the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the world witnessed the inhumane death of Mr. Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis Police Department Officer, which we sat a few minutes ago through eight minutes and forty-six seconds. Whereas the death of Mr. Floyd has led to community, national, and global outrage and outcry through mass protests held in cities across the United States and around the world against the injustice, inequities of the treatment of black people in America. And whereas because of this action, the world is now awaiting on America to take a stand and eradicate these injustices against black people and people of color and especially black men. Whereas studies have shown that the rate at which black Americans are killed by police is more than twice as high as the rate of white Americans. And whereas through the efforts of people across the world, we hope that America will awaken to the need of providing respect, equal citizenship, and support of all citizens regardless of race, religion, color, or creed. And whereas, as a way of overcoming racial disparities, we're saying Mecklenburg County, through the Health Department, must provide accessible health sites to service all people. Through the Board of Education, provide an education for children who are being neglected with the quality education. That they should leave the school system with a diploma saying that they are college-ready or job-ready. We mandate a living wage for all people, provide access to quality food and promote healthy living. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners will and must support implementing, making these requests a reality for all citizens of our community to truly live, to work, to recreate, and hereby proclaim June fifteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty, as Racial Equality Awareness Week in Mecklenburg County and encourage all citizens to join us in this special observance, this sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty. Signed by our chairperson, Mr. George R. Dunlap, Mecklenburg County Chairperson, and Vilma D. Leake, District Two, Mecklenburg County Commissioner. So moved, Mr. Chairman, that we receive and put in action this proclamation.
Second, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Jarrell.
All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Leake, seconded by Commissioner Jarrell. At this time, I will conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public appearance. Madam Clerk, are there speakers signed up?
Yes, Chair Dunlap, we have one speaker.
All right, we have one speaker. And so the public appearance is a period during the board's regular meeting that members of the public are provided the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear during the public appearance portion of our regular meeting may discuss any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners except the following type matters: a matter which concerns the candidacy of any person for public office, including the candidacy of a person appearing before the board, or a request that the board consider funding a certain program or activity either from the current budget or by inclusion in a future budget. Such requests would be made at the board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes. You'll be recognized, you'll have three minutes to speak. A timer will sound at the end of your three minutes. You will be thanked and placed on mute. Madam Clerk, if you would now call on our speakers.
The speaker is Mary Ann Gaffney. Ms. Gaffney, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me be a part of this meeting. I feel like the beginning of the meeting was something that I'll remember for the rest of my life, and I'm grateful that I was able to participate in that. I thank you for your devotion and your professionalism, your care and your seriousness and your leadership. Your presentation was beautifully written and beautifully presented, and I'm very appreciative. I basically stayed on the line just to say that because I really wanted to thank you. And I'll address the comments that I had to all of you via email. But I just wanted to thank you for all that you did this evening to bring things to our attention as the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers?
That concludes our speakers for this evening.
All right. So at this time, we will move to our next item, twenty sixty-one eighty-seven, a continued public hearing for closing of a portion of right-of-way for La Herne Lane. But before we do that, let me call upon our attorney, who would like to make comments relative to this action.
Good evening, Commissioner. This matter was before the board back in March and was continued to this hearing. The last hearing, there was some thought that roads connecting various homes would be completed so that the board could move forward with the closure. However, because of the weather during the spring, they weren't able to get all the roads completed and asphalt laid. And so they've requested a continue to the next hearing to July seventh for the board's meeting. And so I wanted to reflect the request that I had received from the attorney representing the petitioner. So they do believe that with the weather, they should be able to complete the road, the asphalt and the paving by the next board hearing on July seventh, a meeting on July seventh.
All right, there has been a request to, what's the proper term?
Continue.
Continue.
Continue to July seventh. All right, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, Commissioner Fuller.
All right, is there a second? Anybody?
I'll second, this is Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
All right, the motion is moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner McDowell. This time, conduct the roll call vote, Commissioner Powell?
I need some clarification. Does this mean we're going to vote again on July seventh or that the road closes on July seventh?
So they have not brought back for us what we've asked them to do. And so what they're asking is that we wait until the next meeting so that they can come before us and share with us how they view the issue. So we're just continuing the hearing until they come back before us.
Okay, I vote yes.
All right, Commissioner Leake?
Yes. Hear me?
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous vote to continue the hearing.
All right, so there, thank you. We moved item twenty sixty-two oh four, a Tefra hearing, Acts Retirement Life Communities Incorporated. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Jarrell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jarrell, seconded by Commissioner Fuller. At this time, we conduct the roll call vote to open the hearing. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
It's my turn, sir.
No, we hear you. Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous vote to open the hearing.
All right, the hearing is now open. Are there any speakers signed up to speak?
No, Chair Dunlap, there are no speakers.
There being no speakers, is there a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the issues by the Public Finance Authority of its Acts Retirement Life Communities Incorporated?
So moved Scarborough.
Twenty, bonds and one are more serious in an amount not to exceed sixty million dollars. It was moved by Commissioner?
Scarborough.
Scarborough and seconded by?
Leake.
Commissioner Leake. All right. Okay, so at this time, we'll conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the managers' report. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items under my manager's report tonight. The first item is to provide an update to the board on our Discovery Place Nature Museum project. As you know, we've been working with the community for several months on revisions to the plan to satisfy some of the concerns that the neighbors have had with the project. We have been doing that through the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we think we're at a place now where we have satisfied the concerns of the neighbors. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lee Jones, our Director of Park and Recreation, to tee up their presentation and present to you our final design plan. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Manager Diorio, Chair Dunlap, Vice Chair Powell, County Commissioners and County Staff. Tonight's presentation will be provided by our Division Director for Capital Planning and Alliance Development Services, Mr. Bert Lynn. Bert should be ready to tee up the presentation. He's worked very closely with Discovery Place and with Asset Facility Management. So I'm going to go ahead and let Bert Lynn get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Vice Chair, members of the board, and County Commissioner Diorio. Thank you for allowing us to provide you with an update on the work completed over the last few months for Discovery Place Nature in partnership with Discovery Place. This work has been in response to a number of concerns shared by neighbors who live in and around Freedom Park, the location of Discovery Place Nature. Next slide, please. So why does the existing Discovery Place Nature need to be rebuilt? The existing building was built in nineteen fifty-one. Being almost seventy years old, the building has reached the end of its effective life. Changes in building systems, accessibility and life safety standards, and the limitations to improve and enhance exhibits all point to the need for a new building. The new building will allow Discovery Place to meet modern museum accreditation standards. The current building is approximately thirteen thousand square feet in size. Conceptual design of the new building currently sizes the building at approximately twenty-five thousand nine hundred square feet. The larger size of the new building will require additional parking. There are currently sixty-one parking spaces on site. The minimum required parking for a building this size and with this mix of uses is eighty-seven spaces, an increase of twenty-six spaces. Next slide, please. I would like to provide you with a quick overview of the site conditions that must be considered as part of the project. Access to the existing facility is provided from Sterling Road. There was quite a bit of slope on the site, approximately forty feet of vertical change from the high point of the site at the driveway off of Sterling Road to the lowest point of the site along Little Sugar Creek Greenway. There is FEMA floodplain located on the site along Little Sugar Creek. The floodplain is shown by the pink line that moves across the plan. The area adjacent to Princeton Avenue on the left side of the building in this plan is primarily floodplain. The current building is perched on a hill above the floodplain. The green shaded areas on this graphic represent primarily natural areas of the site. The unshaded areas of the site represents impacted areas, which include the driveway, the parking lot, and the building itself. Our goal is to maximize the use of the impacted areas of the site for the new project while minimizing new impacts to these natural areas. While we must respond to the characteristics of the site, we must also be careful to consider the uses adjacent to the site. Next slide, please. Allow me to provide you with a brief history of the project. Discovery Place led a master plan effort in twenty fifteen to envision the future of Discovery Place Nature, understand the size and scope of the new facility, and develop a high-level budget for the project. The county had some participation in this master plan process. Mecklenburg County led a request for qualifications effort in early twenty nineteen, where the design team led by Leolio Architecture was selected. In July of twenty nineteen, Mecklenburg County led a request for qualifications effort for the construction manager at risk, the contractor for the site. Rogers Leaper was selected for this project. Over the summer of twenty nineteen, the design team began conceptual design for the new Discovery Place Nature. Early designs identified two items that would require a variance from the city. The variances would affect the location of the driveway access to the new center and the location of the parking lot. This information was shared with several community groups in meetings held in August of twenty nineteen. The two variances were submitted to the city and reviewed with testimony, both in support and in opposition. In October of twenty nineteen, the variance on access to the site from Sterling Road was approved, while the variance regarding the location of the parking lot was denied. Next slide, please. The ideal location for the building is in the same general location of the existing building. It is above the floodplain, central to the site, and in close proximity to the entrance to Freedom Park and located along Little Sugar Creek Greenway. The proposed building faces Little Sugar Creek Greenway and Freedom Park to create a more inviting and accessible feel. The proposed building would present as a one-story structure from the current entrance on Sterling Road. As the site slopes down toward Little Sugar Creek, a lower level would emerge from below. The building presents as a two-story building along Little Sugar Creek Greenway. The primary entrance is located on the lower level adjacent to the greenway and the park, and that's shown here in the large red arrow. Visitors would enter into a high lobby space where they can access exhibit and classroom spaces. Grand level access to the outdoor exhibits are provided through the lower level, and that's shown here with the two smaller red arrows. The core area shown here would house restrooms, stairs, and the elevator for the building. The dash line in the lower level represents the footprint of the upper level. As visitors enter the upper level of the lobby space, they will find a large exhibit space to one side and a flex space overlooking the greenway, which can serve as a large classroom, meeting space, or a specialty exhibit area. The ideal location for the building is in the same general location of the existing building. It is above the floodplain, central to the site, and in close proximity to the entrance to Freedom Park and located along Little Sugar Creek Greenway. The proposed building faces Little Sugar Creek Greenway and Freedom Park to create a more inviting and accessible feel. The proposed building would present as a one-story structure from the current entrance on Sterling Road. As the site slopes down toward Little Sugar Creek, a lower level would emerge from below. The building presents as a two-story building along Little Sugar Creek Greenway. A primary entrance is located on the lower level adjacent to the Greenway and the park, and that's shown here in the large red arrow. Visitors would enter into a high lobby space where they can access exhibit and classroom spaces. Grand level access to the outdoor exhibits are provided through the lower level, and that's shown here with the two smaller red arrows. The core area shown here would house restrooms, stairs, and the elevator for the building. The dash line in the lower level represents the footprint of the upper level. As visitors enter the upper level of the lobby space, they will find a large exhibit space to one side and a flex space overlooking the Greenway, which can serve as a large classroom, meeting space, or a specialty exhibit area. An observation area overlooking the outdoor exhibits will be accessed from this upper level. The back-of-house area on the upper level houses support functions for the building, which include animal care areas, staff offices, and IT in building systems. Next slide, please. The building and parking lot are proposed in the same general area where they exist today. An entrance plaza is proposed at the main entry to the building at the lower level directly adjacent to Little Sugar Creek Greenway and Freedom Park, and that's shown here with the red dot. An accessible path will connect this entrance plaza to the parking area. Several exhibits will be located along Little Sugar Creek Greenway and the entrance path, including a pollinator garden, an apiary, which is a collection of beehives, and an enhanced frog bog. Larger outdoor exhibits are proposed within a fenced area adjacent to the new building. This area will include an otter habitat, an outdoor classroom, canopy walk, an aviary, learning kiosks, and walking trails. Following the variance process I mentioned earlier, concerns regarding the project continued to be shared with staff as well as the county manager's office and with county commissioners. The decision was made at that time to pause the design of the project to better understand the concerns of the neighborhood and, if possible, address those concerns as part of this project. Next slide, please. We held two neighborhood meetings in December of 2019 and January of 2020. The first was to address a list of questions submitted to the county on behalf of the neighborhood. The questions fell within four groups. Many neighbors shared that they felt there wasn't enough community engagement during the master plan process several years ago and wanted to understand how engagement could be improved during the current project. It was concern that the impact of the new building to the site and the tree canopy would be too great. Neighbors were concerned that a new, larger Discovery Place Nature would contribute to more traffic and increased on-street parking along Sterling Road. Neighbors were also concerned about access to the parking area after hours and overnight. Based on the feedback received during this meeting, the design team studied a number of site layout scenarios that would address these concerns. Next slide, please. At our second neighborhood meeting in January of 2020, we shared five feasible site layout options. Attendees were asked to comment on the option they felt best addressed their concerns. The comments here represent the concerns shared by a number of attendees on both the merits and shortfalls of some of these options. Opinions on the site layouts varied widely, and no single layout was favored by those at the meeting. For this reason, we felt it was best to have further discussions with those most affected by the site layout, the neighbors whose properties are directly adjacent to the site. Next slide, please. The concept the design team felt best addressed the feedback received at the previous meeting was shared with each adjacent neighbor in February of 2020 to mixed results. The bus drop-off on Princeton Avenue, shown here with the red dot, was overwhelmingly appreciated and agreed that it would have a positive impact on traffic to and from the facility. Many neighbors, however, felt the impact to the site was still too invasive due to the long linear parking area and the turnaround located at the end of the parking area. We were asked to consider additional revisions to the site plan to explore a more compact option for the new enlarged parking area. Next slide, please. A revised site plan was completed in March 2020. However, the COVID-19 pandemic delayed our meeting with the adjacent neighbors. We were eventually able to meet again with the neighbors the week of June 1st, 2020 via Skype. The current layout integrates the turnaround into the parking lot area rather than being at the end of the parking lot. An accessible sidewalk will run from Sterling Road to the parking lot and down to the entrance plaza of the new building. This sidewalk will also serve as an access to Little Sugar Creek Greenway and Freedom Park. All 87 proposed parking spaces for the building would be located in the parking area as shown here. The parking area will be lit with LED lighting to allow for the control, allow us to control the hours of operation and the light levels overnight, concerns shared by several of the adjacent neighbors. A retaining wall will be located on the park side of the proposed parking area to reduce impacts to the floodplain. The average height of this wall is approximately 5 and 1/2 feet. A bus drop-off will be provided on Princeton Avenue. Visitors visiting via bus will enter through the outdoor exhibit space and then into the museum. Next slide, please. The biggest change between the current parking area and the new parking area is the buffer between the adjacent homes and the parking lot. Today, the edge of the existing parking lot sits just a few feet from the property line. The new parking lot will be offset approximately 38 feet from the property line and will include a privacy fence shown here with the red line and a landscape buffer. And that privacy fence will be on the actual property line. I know it shows a little offset on this graphic, and that is a mistake on my part. While the buffer requires the entire parking lot to shift towards the park and Greenway, it provides much-needed and much-appreciated separation from the adjacent properties. This concept was viewed as an improvement by the adjacent neighbors. There are a few minor adjustments to be incorporated, but the layout works well with the site. Next slide, please. Our next step will be to reactivate the design team to begin work on the project again. We will first incorporate the feedback received from the adjacent neighbors in our meetings earlier this month. Next, we will begin to update and dial in the project schedule. From a high level, we anticipate the design permitting and bidding to wrap up in summer of 2021. At that time, construction will begin, and we anticipate the site and building construction to take approximately 12 months to complete. An additional six months will be required to install the exhibits in the new building and on the site around. We anticipate the project to be open to the public in early 2023. Next slide, please. With this, I'll turn the presentation back over to Park and Recreation Director Lee Jones.
Thank you, Bert. So that concludes our presentation, and we would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, let me, let me say thank you. This is another one of those projects that the county has been involved in for an extremely long period of time, and I will tell you that I am happy to know that you guys have still been working on it and that you now have a resolution. So this was started, I think, in 2015. So this time, we're going to open it up for questions. Madam Clerk, it will be the timer for four minutes initially and two minutes on a follow-up. You don't have to take that much time if you don't need it. We'll start with, we'll start with Commissioner Fuller.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for-
Come closer to your mic, Commissioner Fuller.
Oh, you can't hear me. Hold on a second. I had it up above my head. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Excellent. So I just wanted to say again, thank you to Lee and Bert for continuing to work on this. I'm really glad we've had the communication with neighbors there. I know it can be, can be intrusive if not, if we're not sensitive to, to the neighbors' concerns. So I'm very glad that we've been able to do that, and I like this new design to be able to accomplish that. I do have a couple of questions. First, I want to know whether any of the changes that we've been talking about would change the original design to the building. Then I wanted to know whether the denial of the variance, I think that's what I heard, denial of the variance relating to the parking lot, what the consequence of that is, and then wanted to know what is the current square footage of the building? So those are the three questions I had.
Sure. So the current square footage of the building is approximately 13,000 square feet, and the proposed size is just under double that at 25,900 square feet. The variance we requested on the parking lot was to forego the buffer between the parking lot and the adjacent property in an effort to reduce impact to the floodplain on the site. Because that was denied, we've included that buffer. It's driving, it will affect the cost of construction a bit, but with retaining walls and the layout that we have here, will have very minimal impacts to the floodplain. And then I am having trouble remembering your third question.
Yeah, so, so the third question was, have any of these changes we've talked about changed at least our original vision of what the building itself would look like?
Uh, no, sir, it hasn't. The building has not moved in terms of design since we paused the project in November of 2019.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that because part of my support for the project was, was how impressed I was with that design and really excited about what the eventual product would be. So, so those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Scarborough?
Commissioner Scarborough, no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cottam?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was at one of those community engagement meetings, and there really were vocal opposition and support for the project. And I just wondered if Mr. Lynn can give us an update, like Dina stated that they have addressed the concerns of the residents. And so I just wondered if you can, you know, sort of color it in a little bit more about the response from the, from the neighborhood and from the folks who would be impacted.
Sure. So some of the residents that were most affected, as I stated in the presentation, were those adjacent neighbors and particularly those who have kind of a wooded area behind their house now. And in some of the layouts that we looked at would have some of those trees removed for the extension of the parking area. And so we were able to, to create a more compact design that worked well with the site and reduced the amount of impact that we had to the site. Currently, there's approximately 1.3 acres of impacted area. This design increases that to 1.6. So it's a, it's a 3/10 of an acre increase to the impacted area of the site, which is fairly small considering we're doubling the building and adding quite a bit more parking spaces. Some of the other concerns that were shared, particularly regarding parking on the roads, we explored several options with the Charlotte Department of Transportation. One option was to not allow parking on the roads at all, which the neighbors weren't in favor of because they liked to be able to park there. Another option that we discussed was the potential for permitted parking here on a, on a permanent basis, and that was not something that the Department of Transportation was willing to entertain. Some of the ways that we are able to address that will be when we have large festivals within the park. We may be able to treat the areas directly around the park as the areas around the Greek Festival are treated in Billworth, if you're familiar with that, where the neighbors directly adjacent to that area have permitted parking for several days.
Right.
So that is something they were willing to entertain. And also, the bus drop-off, there's quite a bit of schoolchildren that, that visit on a regular basis, and so by keeping that bus traffic on Princeton, which is a more major road, and not coming in and out of the parking lot, everyone saw that as a plus.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate those, those tweaks that you guys have made, but I, it still really feels to me like a giant thing that doesn't fit the space. And I understand what you're saying, that it's only slightly larger than what's there now, but all of the, the attractions and everything, it just seems like it would be so much better suited if it was placed somewhere else. But anyways, that, that's kind of my first impression of this, and my first impression hasn't changed. So anyways, that concludes my questions and comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Harding?
Thank you, Chairman. I have no questions.
All right, Commissioner Jarrell?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
Bert, can you speak to other properties that you looked at for placement of Discovery Nature in the county?
Yeah, there was a, there was a request during one of the first two meetings that we had to, you know, potentially explore a few different locations outside of Freedom Park for this. And one of those that came up in the meeting was Park Road Park, and there were a few other locations that we looked at. And there were some limitations that we found within those parks that, that don't exist in Freedom Park, particularly pertaining to land and water conservation funding that has been used in a lot of our older parks within our system that limit the, the building of indoor uses or indoor facilities within the park and require an offset and a payment for anything of that nature. We're able to get around that here at this park because Discovery Place Nature was built in 1951, and those land and water conservation funds weren't used here until the early 70s. So they didn't apply to this particular location. We're grandfathered in with the square footage that we have. There were also some impacts to funding on Discovery Place's side, their matching funding that they were using that they did not feel would be able to transfer from this site to another location.
So my understanding is there are strings tied, tied from donors to this location, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And do you have a dollar amount on that? Do you know?
The amount that would not transfer, I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. So anyone that's been paying attention to this knows that I have never been a fan of this site. I don't think it's the right site. I think it's going to be like a festival in the park problem every single day. I feel like Freedom Park is already crowded and being loved to death, and I am very concerned about the crowds. I do want you to know that I'm thankful, I'm very thankful that you're listening to community input, but I feel like the people that have called me feel like it's, they're being steamrolled and, I mean, whether they want it or not, so they're trying to give input on how to make it the best it can be. I'm just, I'm very concerned about many things, you know, the loss of tree canopy, the lighting, the crowds. I think it would be a much better fit to put it somewhere in District 2 or in District 4 to spur the economy and to, to make it equitable. But that is my opinion, and I do appreciate, I'd like to hear some more community input, so I hope we get invited to the next meeting. Thank you.
I think everybody's at least had at least one round. As I stated before, this project has been in existence now for five years. So three years before some of you got to the board, we have been working on this project. Since you have gotten to the board, there've been a number of changes to the project. And we're now at a point where everybody can agree. And so if the community's okay with it, the funders are okay with it, I think this ought to be something that we ought to be able to support as opposed to trying to figure out something else that would make us go through this whole process again by infringing on something that somebody else may or may not want. So I think we're in a good space, and I would ask you to support this initiative. So second and final round, Commissioner Fuller?
Uh, I have no further comments, thank you.
Commissioner Scarborough?
No further comments, but I wonder whether is this time now for a motion?
Not yet.
All right, all right.
Commissioner Cotham? Commissioner Cotham?
No further questions. We have talked about this for a long time, so thank you.
Commissioner McDowell?
No further comments.
Commissioner Harden?
No comments.
Commissioner Jarrell?
No additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Leake?
No comments. And leave my thing on so I can yawn and, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
This is Commissioner Powell, and I've been involved every step of the way since two thousand fifteen and have never voted yes. And so I do not support this site and I won't. And I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
All right, so the chair has no other questions. Okay, Commissioner Scarborough, at this time I entertain a motion to accept it.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is not an item for, this is for information only, this not prior vote of the board.
All right, thank you. And we look forward to further follow-up. All right?
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda tonight is approval of capital project ordinances for fiscal year twenty-one. And I'm going to turn the podium over to Sarah Cunningham, our CFO, who will walk you through her presentation about where we are with our capital improvement plan and where we go from here. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening. Thank you, County Manager Diorio, Chair Dunlap, and Commissioners. Tonight, I am presenting to you the capital ordinances for your approval as we enter our third year of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three capital improvement plan. Next slide, please. The capital improvement plan, or CIP, is a five-year plan that provides a roadmap to our investments to sustain and improve the county's infrastructure. The CIP identifies the costs, the funding sources, the type of project, the locations, and the timing for construction and completion of all the projects that the county expects to undertake over the five-year period. And may I ask, are people able to hear me? I'm getting some texts that might be on the phone. Is that better?
We hear you. I hear you.
Thank you, sir. So the CIP identifies the costs, the funding, the type of project, the location, and the timing for construction and completion of all the projects that the county expects to undertake within the five-year period. As you all know, the CIP funds in capital investments in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, park and recreation, government facilities, Central Piedmont Community College, and the libraries. Each year, we bring you the capital ordinances to provide the budget authority for the coming year of the CIP. Next slide, please. Now normally, at this point, the CIP is reserved in terms of timing and costs. However, this year, CMS is coming to the county with a significant expected increase in the cost for its current CMS capital plan. So tonight, I will walk through the current CIP with proposed major changes and a focus on the CMS increases. We will then walk through the CIP for the other categories of investment and then take your questions. Next slide, please. The proposed changes for CMS and other new investments would increase the capital plan from one point one, six one million to one point seven five billion over the five years. CMS has forecast a significant net increase of eighty-nine point two million to cover additional costs of land and construction. This covers all of the expected shortfalls, net of savings that CMS has identified for the entire fiscal year two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three CIP. CMS ordinances that we are asking you to approve tonight would provide seventy-five point five million of this funding. The rest of the increases are associated with projects that are slated to start next year. And you will see them in the ordinances that we bring to you next June. As you can see in the chart at the top, the other ordinances for park and recreation, government facilities, and library implement items that the BOCC has either reviewed or approved at previous meetings. We have the two million in additional funding for park and recreation land as provided in the operating budget. We have eight million for government facilities, including the CGMC renovations and the county building security enhancements projects. And we also have thirty-nine point five million for Spirit Square, as discussed in our previous regular board meeting. As of May thirty-first, two hundred and sixty-two point nine million of the current CIP has been expended. Next slide, please. CMS estimates eighty-nine point two million more is needed to achieve the projects that are outlined in the current fiscal year nineteen through two thousand twenty-three CIP. This is an increase of nine point six percent in costs across the current CIP for CMS. On the growth side, there's an estimated one hundred point four million in cost increases from land and additional construction costs across twenty projects. Of this hundred million, thirty million is for land and seventy point four million is for increased project costs. These increases are offset in part with a savings of eleven point two million to those projects where bids have come in below projected as follows. Hollinswood Language Academy, Harding High School, and both the North and South K-38 Language Immersion Schools. Next slide, please. CMS ordinances tonight include thirty million of new funding for land, which includes two point five million for the Windsor Idyllwind Elementary School, Relief School, and twenty-seven point five million for South Mecklenburg Relief High School. And please note, the twenty-five, twenty-seven point five million is the total estimated cost for land for South Mecklenburg High School. CMS is proposing to repurpose the twelve point five million that was already set aside for land for South Mecklenburg Relief High School to cover estimated project cost increases for this high school. The ordinances before you tonight would provide funding for the projects that have started in previous fiscal years or anticipated shortfalls, net of estimated savings. It would also repurpose the twelve point five million that have been provided for South Mecklenburg High School land to cover the increased construction costs. It also funds projects that are starting in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one, which are EE Waddell and the Garringer High School renovation in addition. As of May thirty-first, CMS has spent a hundred and forty-two point one million of its current CIP. Next slide, please. So going over some of the other categories, the CIP for park and recreation provides eight point six million in total funding for land acquisition in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. That's a total of thirty-seven million of the current CIP for park and land acquisition. As of May thirty-first, fourteen point five million has been spent to acquire land under the current CIP for park and recreation. In addition to land, the proposed ordinances would fund five million for the Eastfield Regional Park set to start this year. So far, there has been sixty-nine point one million of the current CIP for park and recreation spent today. Next slide, please. Looking to government facilities, the ordinances before you tonight would increase the budget for CGMC renovation by three point eight million. This is to be offset by savings from government facilities from the fiscal year two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen CIP. The action would also fund Phase Two of county security upgrades with an increase of four point eight million for a total cost of seven point six million. Under the current CIP, twenty point four million has been spent to date on government facilities projects. Next slide, please. Central Piedmont Community College projects have all been authorized through prior year ordinances. So just to give an overview of what we have so far, total appropriations of a hundred and fifty-one point one million in this CIP cover investments in central campus, Harris Campus, and land acquisition. Of the Central Piedmont Community College budget, twenty-one point five million has been spent for the CPCC projects. Next slide, please. For the library, the ordinances provide thirty-nine point five million for the Spirit Square and Main Library projects as these projects are connected. This is added to the sixty-six point seven million already existing in the CIP for the Main Library project and Scaly Barque Library Replacement Project approved last year. Total expenses for the library to date have been six point four million. This reflects slower-than-anticipated spending due in large part to main library decisions on hold pending the Spirit Square approval last board meeting. Next slide, please. Now, as we move to questions, CMS guests are on the line and available to address questions on projects for the CMS portfolio. We have CMS Superintendent Ernest Winston, Deputy Superintendent for Operations Carol Stamper, and Program Director for Capital Services Don Cave, all available to help outline any questions you may have on CMS projects. And we thank them for being available for these questions. With that, happy to address any questions by the board.
All right, Madam Clerk, about four minutes and two minutes, I will start with Commissioner Fuller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to go back to the slide for the library CIP. And you mentioned on this slide that the ordinance provides thirty-nine point five million dollars for Spirit Square. Now, does that flow from the decision we just made last meeting or the meeting before where we made a selection on which one of the Spirit Square options we wanted?
Yes, that's exactly right. This reflects the thirty-nine point five million for the option the board voted on.
Okay. And then with respect to the CMS requests, am I to understand that there were some savings from projects that have been completed either in this CIP or in previous CIPs that's now going to be help offset this eighty-nine million, or have you already included that in the eighty-nine million number?
That is already included in the eighty-nine million number. So for the four schools where there were savings on Slide Five, those reflect schools that have already been bid out and the bids have come in below projected. So Collinswood Language Academy, Harding High School, and both of the K-38 Language Immersion Schools. That provides the eleven point two million in savings.
All right, so let me sharpen my question a bit. So with respect to projects that are from a previous CIP and to the extent that were savings from those projects in a previous CIP, are those savings applied in this CIP?
So for CMS, all of the savings that would apply here for the nineteen through two thousand twenty-three CIP are within the current CIP.
All right, so were there savings in the previous CIP?
There were not savings in the previous CIP. Where there were individual projects where there were savings, those were reapplied to projects where there were overages and prior actions.
Okay, so...
So there was about one point nine million in savings across a few projects remaining in the prior CIP that went into the shortfall for the CTE project in the prior CIP, the fourteen to eighteen CIP. So those have already been applied.
All right, and so do we expect that this eleven point two million dollars of quote-unquote savings will be the extent of savings that we'll have on CMS projects in this CIP? Or might there be some additional opportunities for savings that would help offset perhaps in the future this eighty-nine million dollar request?
So these are the savings that we expect to date. The county staff have been working very closely with CMS staff over the past few months. And we're working to make sure that as we identify savings or opportunities, we're bringing that information on a more regular basis to the board. So as of now, it's our best estimate of the savings we have. I'll look if CMS Carol Stamper or Superintendent Winston would like to address that.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And thank you, Chairman Dunlap, members of the Board of County Commissioners, and County Manager Diorio for this opportunity to join a meeting virtually this evening. As Ms. Cunningham stated, attending with me are Ms. Stamper and Mr. Cave. And I would just like to take a brief opportunity to answer part of that question. And Ms. Stamper and Mr. Cave, if you have any additional information, please join in. But as it relates to the savings, when we look at the two thousand thirteen bond project, there's approximately another about ten million dollars from that bond that could potentially be applied. Now, we will, of course, continue to pursue savings and cost avoidance to our projects. And so as Ms. Cunningham stated, there could be additional savings down the road.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions I have for this round.
All right, Commissioner Scarborough?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, no, I don't have any more questions at this time.
All right, Commissioner Cotham?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this presentation. You know, I know that these escalation issues are real. And the price of land has increased tremendously. And we also have had a lot of tariffs on steel that affect construction cost. So, you know, I don't know how you can calculate that way ahead of time because you don't know things are going to happen. So, but this is the world we live in, and so I'm not overreacting to these numbers. And, but I do think it is important that we continue to buy land for the future because, you know, of things like this. So I don't really have any questions. We have heard presentations like this over the years. And I know that the county and the school system is working together on this. So thank you for the presentation. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner McDowell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say that I really, I understand these overruns for the school projects. And as Commissioner Cotham said, you know, these are understandable with our current climate that we find ourselves in. One of the things that I am really concerned about, and I'd just love to address this to our CMS guests on the line. The thing that I hear most in my district, one of the biggest problems is middle school overcrowding, particularly at Community House Middle. And so I think that the high school issue, I'm extremely excited that that is in the works. But it seems like the middle school issue was maybe left out somehow of the equation when the bond was created. I'm not quite sure, you know, how that occurs or whatever. I did notice that there have been some boundary changes for Community House, and I know the Ray Farms K eight is going to take a little bit away from from that school. But that school is severely overcrowded. And and as, you know, a newer commissioner, looking at the C I P this way, I I guess what I'm looking for is is there any way of having of advocating for a project aside from the, you know, the bond that the middle school was missed? Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to trying to figure out how I can advocate. Can you guys bring a project for a middle school to relieve overcrowding? Because as I look at the C I P in this five-year process and the previous bond, you know, leaving it out, I'm just trying to figure out how can we how can we address this extremely overcrowding situation that we have in the middle schools in District Six?
Commissioner Harden, thank you very much for that question. I appreciate that. I will just indicate that we are currently in the process of updating our capital needs assessment. And, you know, I I know that it will take additional funds to to build another school. And perhaps, I think, you know, one of the best ways to to address that would be in a future bond. Other ways to address the middle school needs, and to your point, they are real in terms of overcrowding, particularly at the southern part of the county. Certainly, COPs is is an option, using pay-go for middle school construction is another option. So those are just a few of the options that come to mind in terms of how that we can address the middle school overcrowding.
Thank you. Thank you for answering, Superintendent. But I I guess what I really want to make sure you hear me saying is I don't want to wait until the next bond. That feels too far away. And so what I'm hearing from the residents in District Six is that, you know, we can't wait that long. And so I'm just putting it to you that I I really hope that there's some way that you can help, you know, find a solution that's outside of the next bond. And I'm I'm willing to try to do anything that I can to help make that happen. And so and just to to move on from the C M S question, I'll ask my next question in the next round. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now the real Susan Harden.
Chair Chairman Dunlap, my apology, and Commissioner Rodriguez, my apology as well.
No worries. I don't mind being confused with Professor Dr. Harden. It's a compliment. I consider it quite a compliment, so thank you.
Yeah, we're called Susan squared, so we like it. So there's, it's, it's, it's all good. So, you know, I I I'm going to support this measure, and I can tell you that my constituents are happy to have a resolution on the South Charlotte High School. I do want to say that, you know, one of, I I want to agree with Commissioner Cotham's comment about the importance of that we continue to buy land and that 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 is a priority for our commission. And the other thing that's that I find hopeful about this presentation is the C I P can change. And as we see projects that come on that are good projects, that we can take advantage of those projects. And so that, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll do more on greenways, and we'll do more on parks and throughout our community as well as libraries. And so what makes me hopeful is is that, you know, the fact that we make C I P adjustments is that, you know, that 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 we can add to the plan, and that I I'm hopeful that we'll continue to do that. So I'm going to support this, and I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jarrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions at this time. I think they've been asked.
Commissioner Leake.
Thank you. My question deals with Collinswood Language Academy. Is that, is that a K eight? Is that a K eight school?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Leake, I apologize. I was unmuting myself. Collinswood Language Academy.
Harding, what do we plan to do at Harding?
Commissioner Leake, good afternoon, Commissioner Leake, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, this is Carol Stamper. So at Harding, we are building a brand-new gymnasium, which will allow for us to leave the one there now as an auxiliary gym, and we are doing some major renovations to our cafeteria at Harding.
All right, thank you. Now, the language emergent school, where is that?
So we have two language emergent schools, both K eights. One is being built on the old Nations Ford property. You probably know where that is.
Yes.
Off of Nations Ford Road, and the other is where the old J M Alexander Middle School existed because we built a new one across the road.
Okay, stop right there. My next question deals with what land do we own near schools today that's available that we could build on?
So I don't have the, I don't have the exact list of the land in front of me, Commissioner Leake.
Get that to me if you can, the land that we already own.
Absolutely. We'll do, Commissioner Leake.
All right, and my next question deals with maybe it's not included about West Charlotte. Is that included in this process of cutting down the size of that school? Hello?
Com- Commissioner Leake, I can, the board did vote on the West Charlotte High School project. I'm happy to address it if you would like, ma'am.
I said, is this a part of where West Charlotte is being cut back, and why, and when, and how much?
That that is not a part, it's part of the twenty seventeen bond referendum, but it's not a part of the request this evening.
All right, well, thank you so much. So what you're asking us for is eighty nine point two million dollars to do these three projects, Collinswood, Harding, and the two language emergent schools?
That, Commissioner Leake, that is correct, and to also help fund cost escalation for other projects in the twenty seventeen bond referendum.
Okay, and so I won't eat up my time. My next question deals with E E Waddell. How much are we spending to recap the high school that was a high school?
Ms. Stamper or Mr. Cave, would you like to take that one?
Commissioner Leake, right now, we have in the bond project budget four and a half million dollars to repurpose E E Waddell from the existing K eight to a high school.
And that would be from nine to twelve, right?
That's correct, ma'am.
Now, where are our K eights schools located now?
I don't have that list, but we can certainly get that to you. It's readily available, but Commissioner Leake, I don't have it right in front of me, but we can certainly send you a list of all of our K eights.
Well, and the reason I'm asking, most of them that you've turned to elementary schools into K eights are not meeting the standards for our children, and that's a problem for the children across the district, that K eight. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Powell.
This is Commissioner Powell, and I want to ask a question to whoever's going to answer the question for land acquisition in Park. Sarah or Lee?
Just ask the question, and the public person will respond.
Okay, so there's a line here that says as of May thirty first, fourteen and a half million dollars in land acquisition is under the C I P to date. Does that mean you haven't spent fourteen and a half that you need to spend, or?
Nope.
To clarify that.
Yes, to clarify, we have expended, so we have purchased fourteen point five million in land so far of the thirty seven million that's provided for park and recreation land.
Okay, so you didn't unders- okay, I got it.
Yep, we are, we are spending a pace.
Okay, you feel good about that pace?
I'll let Lee answer that question. As the finance officer, yes, I do, but Lee?
Maybe he's not here, but I don't want to use up all my time. I I just want to echo what other commissioners have said about the importance of land acquisition. As we approach build-out, it's going to become harder and harder and more expensive. And I think we just need to remember how important of a priority this is. And I think that we're going to to see an availability of some land that maybe previously we hadn't been, wouldn't have been able to acquire. So I hope we are ready to acquire it, because now is the time. We can do it. And that, and I I support all of the the ask from C M S. I don't have any questions about that. I if we can vote on the ordinances separately, and you can speak to that, Chairman, when it's, when it's time. But that concludes my questions. Thank you.
All right, I have a few questions. First of all, let me add to Commissioner Leake's request. I like the updated list on assets of C M S in terms of vacant land or buildings not being used. I'd also like to know if there are any offers on current or existing properties of C M S and the values of those properties. One of the things I'm 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 aware of is the fact that when C M S rents buildings and what have you, they accumulate monies as a result of that. So how do we know in this request that you're using those monies that are supposed to be put back into the building program? What is that shown in this process?
Ms. Stamper, maybe you may want to take that question from Chairman Dunlap.
Good evening, Chairman Dunlap. So the the proceeds that we receive from the few rentals that we have or leases that we have, it, to my knowledge, does not enter into this capital bond program money to offset any or redirect for any of the bond projects.
So how are those funds being used then?
I will have to to refer to my chief finance officer, and I will get with Ms. Shirley and get you a response to that, Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you. I'd certainly like to know that.
Right, I wouldn't want to misstep, misstate, so I will get that answer for you.
All right, now, we're coming to us with a request. Now, because of COVID, COVID is going to have an impact one way or the other. I don't know if it's going to be good. I don't know if it's going to be bad. I don't know if there's going to be an additional cost escalation, or whether the cost is going to go down because people are needing to get back to work. But at some point in the not-too-distant future, I'd like to have these projects relooked at to see what effect COVID is going to have. You've heard people talk about the cost of land going up, and we don't want to get too far out on this C I P before we need to know if there are other effects as well. You mentioned that there could be potentially an additional ten million dollars savings. Is that factored into the request? Are you asking for the eighty nine million with the expectation that if you save the ten million that you're talking about, then that request would mean that you have an additional ten million to add to other projects? How how does that work?
So Chair Dunlap, if I might take a stab at this one, those potential, if, to the extent that there are savings on a prior C I P, those would be funds that we still hold within the county because we pay C M S invoices as the construction process is ongoing. So to the extent that we are able to identify any savings from the prior C I P, and there's a proposal to reapply, we would bring it back to this board.
But Sarah, I think the point is that any savings that we've identified so far have already been included
Yes.
in this presentation, so the gap is still eighty nine million dollars.
I got it. I got it. Thank you. Thank you. And my last question is the university library. Is that in this C I P, or is that to be in the next C I P in two thousand and thirteen? I mean, twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry.
The University City Library, we're doing as sort of a coordination with a developer, so that'll result in lease payments. So that would be in the operating budget. You would not see that here.
Okay, all right, thank you. Second round. If there is a second round, Commissioner Fuller.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I actually had a question that just arose from some comments you just had. Is it possible that we can use CARES Act money for this if we are saying that because of COVID we are having these additional costs that we can connect to COVID? Would that satisfy to spend CARES Act money on at least a portion of this eighty nine million dollars?
So I don't think that these shortfalls are the result of COVID. If we could make the connection, we can certainly take a look at that. But C M S also got their own allocation of CARES funding. So we would look to C M S first to take a look to see whether or not their funding can be used to satisfy any shortfalls that may exist.
Well, that's, that's a really good point, and and I'm bringing this up because, well, first of all, we got to use this COVID money as as efficiently as we can. And there may be an issue about whether or not this eighty nine million will be spent before December thirtieth. But but I I'm bringing this up because I'm concerned about what our county manager has warned us about at least a couple of times relating to our debt load and how close we are getting to our twenty eight percent of limit. And I'm I'm becoming very concerned about that. This may not put us on the line, but I fear that it put us, puts us closer to the line. And we'll limit the ability that we have to adjust this capital projects ordinance any further. So I I I hope we think about that.
All right, Commissioner Scarborough.
No more questions. You guys are doing a good job. I shouldn't have added anything at all.
Commissioner Cotham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for all of the explanations. I I would just add a a comment that I I do have concerns about reducing the number of classrooms in a school when we spend so much money on a school. And then, you know, for savings, they cut off twenty-five classrooms. And that just is something that I'm worried about. I'm not asking for a response, but it's something that's on my mind, and I don't want I have, we've had schools open with with the mobile units. And so I just ask you to be careful about that. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
All right, Commissioner Cotham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think for my final comments, I I just want to speak to the, kind of on the tail of what Commissioner Fuller said, I've been wondering if, Dina, if you can help me understand the timing, is 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 our our revenues that, you know, are going to be so off in the next, you know, year or two or however long it takes us to recover? Is there a way, or or is there even a thought of slowing down some of the projects that are not vital? And I don't mean the school projects, I mean government facilities and like the library. Is this the right time? I really love to understand, you know, I mean, respectfully, I understand most of these projects were put in place before I was here. But but now that we find ourselves in a time like this, I just am wondering, does that impact the C I P? Is there any, do you ever change course and go, you know, this isn't the time for these kind of investments? We should be more outward focused on the community and that type of thing. Can you speak to that at all for me?
Sure, and I think that's a really good point. Sure. And I think that's a really good question because when we were in the midst of the recession in 2008, nine, and 10, you know, that was one of the things that we had to do is we had to pull back on our capital spending because the way we were paying for it really impacted our operating budget. But now that we have the debt service fund, we have a lot more predictability in how our capital spending works. So we're still, we're still able to move forward with our capital plan. I think there's two things that I would say about that. One is, you know, if you move forward with our capital planning, that helps the local economy because we continue to employ people that work on those projects. And the second thing I would say, second thing I would say is that the cost of borrowing now is at historical lows. So if we need to borrow, and I can tell you that we will need to borrow money to pay that $89 million, this is the time to do it because interest rates are historical lows. So I think that, you know, even though we're in a, in a difficult situation on the revenue side, that really doesn't impact the capital side. So I think we're in a good place there. But thank you for that question. That's a really good question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Harden?
No further questions. I do appreciate the information that the county manager provided. I think that's very helpful. And again, I'm going to support these additions. Thank you.
Commissioner Darrell?
I just have a quick question for Sarah. Sarah, when we look at differences in, in cost, are the percent differences among projects consistent?
No, it varies widely depending on the nature of the cost increase. So for example, if you've got a project that has, so if we look at just the projects for fiscal year 2021, a lot of that is land. So we would see a specific, a significant increase because the cost of land was much higher than we expected. In other cases, we see it either a slight savings or a moderate increase. It really depends on the specifics of the project.
Got it. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman. I was just really curious about if there's a consistency when we see these, these differences. If there's a consistency with the, from a percentage perspective across these projects and, and, and how we would react if there are any anomalies there. So Sarah, thank you for answering the question.
Okay, Commissioner Leach?
Thank you. Did I get an answer about the West Charlotte School? Is that included in this process that we're looking at now, this 89 million?
Commissioner Leach, that project has been voted on and approved by the board. It is not included in our conversation tonight.
Okay, but the, but the public voted on a bond that gave us, we'll, we'll readdress that, I'm sure. Am I right?
Can you tell me a little bit more, Commissioner Leach, in terms of readdressing it?
We were readdress West Charlotte High School and the bond.
Well, the, the board voted, actually to go ahead-
But the board told us also what they wanted when we did the bonds. And that's what we did. So we need to readdress that. That's number one. Number two, how do we equate middle schools today in that they're asking is, is in District Six for middle schools? What constitutes a middle school?
Commissioner Leach, in terms of the number of classrooms that we typically build with the middle schools?
What, what grade level constitutes a middle school?
My apology. I wasn't clear. For middle school, it is sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, Commissioner.
All right. So those schools that she's asking for, for her district, because they're not K-8, right?
I believe that is correct.
So I wish you would relook at that and, and look at the rest of the district where we talk about K-8. Let's look at middle schools as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders across the district and making sure that we treat all of our students the same.
Point well taken, Commissioner Leach.
And I want a response to that. And I want a response to West Charlotte. I can't leave you with that. My people are worrying me to death about it and we ought to the public to do what we said we were going to do. There is growth on the west side of town. So why are you skimming us back on a board process that was never discussed with us? So please get me a response.
Okay, Commissioner Powell?
I really appreciate Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell's question and county manager's answer. And just to clarify it a little bit more, Dina, can you talk about why now is the best time to borrow?
Well, it's the best time to borrow because interest rates are at historical lows. So we can borrow money at a very, very low interest rate. And so it, it is a good time to borrow.
And, and I know like how much you care about the stability of the county. And so you don't, if, if you had a concern about stability, you would have shared it with us way before now.
Correct. You know, I think what I would say about this, I mean, there's this $89 million shortfall that CMS has on their bond and there's, you know, there's a couple of ways we can address it. We could say we're just going to borrow the money and this would be non-voted debt. We wouldn't, you could give that to the voters. It's, I don't think that would be my recommendation, but we could borrow the money using non-voted debt. Or we could say, well, we're just going to push those projects out into future years. And I think that if I know the board well enough, I would say that we know there's a need for these projects. And so I don't think pushing them out into future years is in the best interest of the community. So I think we just need to figure out a way to finance that and keep on pace and continue these projects and bring them forward to the community. So I think, and I think from a debt service perspective, because interest rates are so low and because the way we've managed our debt over the last several years, I think that we could manage it effectively and it would not have an impact on our credit rating or our operating budget.
Okay. That comforts me. Thank you.
All right. Madam Manager, you said something about the borrowing rate that made me think something crazy. Maybe not so crazy. Since now is the best time to borrow and we know we're going to need money into the future, does it make sense to borrow more than we need given cost to pay it back is so small compared to what we do if we borrowed it when we needed it and the interest rate be higher?
So I, I mean, I can certainly ask Sarah to talk more about this, but the, you know, the vote, the non-voted debt that we're talking about has to be attached to, to specific projects and there are spend down requirements and things that you have to meet. So we just can't borrow money and just sit on it. It has to be attached to projects. And Sarah, I'll let you chime in here because I think you're more up to speed on this than I am right now.
So let me, let me, let me just follow up on my question so she can answer it all at one time. And so, Dina, given what you've just said, that they have to be attached to projects, we know in the future, there are going to be other projects being built that are not a part of this CIP. So when you consider that, given that it has to be attached to projects, can we look out a little ways and see projects that are coming down the pipe? And if it's possible, that we might attach the borrowing to? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at, at, see if there's projects out there that we want to accelerate. But again, Sarah is the keeper of the capital plan, so I'm going to ask her to respond.
That's exactly right. We can look out in the future and start thinking about those financing options, but as Dina pointed out, for the non-voted debt, you need to have basically got a project to a place where it is 75% bid out. So that means that the project has to be pretty far, pretty far in phase before you can use this non-voted debt to move forward. So it's, it's really behooves us to be planning, but really looking at those financing options as those projects get to that stage. Far enough along.
All right, we've had our two rounds of questions. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Can we divide them?
Okay, we will. Let me see how. Madam Manager, how many, how many items are there? Because I don't have that document. The capital project audit. Let me ask you this, Commissioner Powell. Which one do you want separated from the group?
The library and the security.
Okay, so let's do this. We'll vote on all items other than the library and security and then we'll come back and we'll vote on those two.
Mr. Chair, be specific if you would, so that-
I don't have the list.
I think, Sarah, which one of those capital project ordinances has the security in it? I can see the one that has the library in it.
That's number E.
I'm pulling up-
Letter E. But there's three more, F, G, and H. Let's see.
Yep. I believe it's the 2019 government facilities that have security in it. I'm opening the-
What page is that on?
Okay, so you want to pull out letter E and letter G.
What page?
It's on the first page, Commissioner Leach. It's just the, it's just the art, the first-
Okay, I see you. I got it. I got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One, one of these has projects from 2014 through 2018, and I was wanting to ask about, about that. Is there a time where we get to ask about? The, it says FY 2016 authorization, government facilities. Like, I don't understand. These are things that have already been done.
Okay, so, but they're still being funded. And so they're part of the CIP. So remember the CIP is from 2019 to 2023, correct, Dina?
I'm just, yeah, that's correct. But we're also continuing to work on the prior CIP that those projects are continuing. So there's, you know, we don't, when we start a CIP, we don't authorize all the projects in the first year. We authorize them as we go and we continue to add on as we go. And Sarah, I think you could probably provide some more info on what the 2016 government facilities one is.
The 2016, that basically is giving us the funding, that is the savings from the prior CIP that is being applied to the government center renovation project. So this is basically pulling down the prior CIP so we can use those savings to pay for those CMGC renovations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the specific, the specific motion is a motion to accept all of the projects with the exception of E and G.
In the, it, definitely E, but it doesn't say specifically in F, G, and H. So I'm trying to understand exactly what's in F, G, and H.
So, and I apologize, I do not have the list with the lettering on it.
I don't have it either.
Yeah, the government facilities facility upgrade fiscal year 2020 is the item that includes the security facilities upgrade. So it's the government facilities 2020 authorization ordinance? Whatever letter that falls in.
Okay, that helps. And what is FY 2019? It's G, like, F says FY 2016 authorization for government facilities and government district renovation. So what is 2016?
The 2016 is the reduction to the prior year CIP to fund the 2019 authorization increase in government facilities for CGMC.
Which is?
The Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center, the 11th floor renovations.
So that's, that's the 2019?
That's the 2019, exactly. The 2016 is being reduced so we can use those savings for the 2019 government facilities increase.
Okay, so I want to pull E, G, and H.
Okay. E, G, and H?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to, to accept all those with the exception of E, G, and H?
So moved. This is Commissioner Harden.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Powell.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Harding, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Roll call vote. On all except E, G, and A, Commissioner Powell?
Well, Commissioner, before we move on, is this motion vote to divide? And then to pull out each one so that we're clear. The motion was to divide.
That was not the motion. Whether the motion was to accept all, except those three, and then we'll vote on those three separately.
Okay.
Okay. Now, everybody clear on the motion? All right, Commissioner Powell, how do you vote on separating those three out and approving the other?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Leach?
I vote no.
Commissioner Darrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
We are going to vote on the other, on the remaining ones. Is that correct?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That motion passed eight to one.
All right. So now, this is the motion to accept item E. Roll call vote. Commissioner Powell?
We need a motion, don't we?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Leach moved, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough.
Correct.
Roll call vote on item E. Commissioner Powell?
No.
Commissioner Leach?
Yes.
Commissioner Darrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
I'm sorry, I don't understand which one is E.
Library facility.
Oh, the library? Vote aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That motion carried eight to one.
All right. Is there a motion to accept item G?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Bill Malink.
Is there a second?
Second, Scarborough.
Moved by Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Leach, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Roll call vote. Item G, Commissioner Powell?
No.
Commissioner Leach?
Yes.
Commissioner Darrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Which one is G?
Government facility.
Is this the 11th floor?
Yes.
I vote no.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
The motion carried seven to two.
All right. And then on the last one, item H. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Bill Malink.
All right, moved by Commissioner Leach. There's a second.
Second, Harden.
Moved by Commissioner Leach, seconded by Commissioner Harden. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell?
No.
Commissioner Leach?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem? Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
Again, Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
The motion carried eight to one.
All right. So that concludes the capital project. All right, we're back to the managers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on my manager's report is a COVID-19 update. There are two components to this. The first, I'm going to ask Gibby Harris to give us an update on where we are with our COVID-19 response. And then after that, I will ask Michael Bryant to walk me through a presentation on where we are with recommendations on how we should proceed with our CARES funding spending. So we'll start with Gibby and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Dunlap, I mean Chairman Dunlap, Commissioners and Manager Diorio. First, I'd like to thank you for your proclamation on racism tonight. As your health director, I support the recognition of racism as a public health issue. And I'm grateful for your leadership and commitment and support of public health in Mecklenburg County. I commit to working with you and our community on the actions needed to address this crisis. So again, thank you for that leadership. Um, I'd like to give you an update on where we are with COVID-19, um, in Mecklenburg County. Uh, next slide, please. Today, um, at the end of the day, we had a total of 7,336 confirmed cases in Mecklenburg County. We have had 134 deaths, and we now have 20 outbreaks in congregate living facilities in our community. Next slide, please. On June 14th, we had 6,810 lab confirmed cases. Um, we have been seeing increased testing in our community, and, uh, over the last 18 days, straight 18 days, we've seen triple-digit numbers of new cases in our community identified. Next slide. The characteristics, some characteristics of our cases, um, three and four were adults ages 20 to 59. That's been true since the beginning of, uh, this pandemic in our community. Thirty-six point eight were Hispanic, most of whom are younger adults ages 20 to 39. Um, we have seen a good bit of increased testing in our Hispanic community, and what we're seeing with some of the roving sites that Atrium has had in that community is the positivity rate is higher than, um, than in the rest of the population. We've had two children, uh, recently with multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. Um, both of them have done well, but unfortunately, right now, we do have a child in our community who's on a ventilator. We've had about one in 10 of all cases have been hospitalized, and just over half, as you see, 34,000, 3,421 have been released from isolation so far. Next slide. Um, these are the, is a, uh, map of the lab confirmed cases per 100,000 residents by zip code, and this is the patients' residence. Um, as you can see, we have widespread, um, COVID in our communities, although we do have some areas um, that have higher rates than others. Next slide, please. Um, again, 128, uh, related deaths among Mecklenburg County residents as of June 14th. You can see, um, uh, the, the, uh, spread has been, um, fairly even over time, but we haven't seen a slight increase here recently. Next slide, please. So, um, some of the characteristics of those who have died from COVID in our community. Again, most of those, 91% were adults 60 and older with underlying chronic health conditions. We are seeing increased numbers in our 40 to 59 age group, um, that has risen to 8.6% of our cases. Um, all but two of those 40 to 59, uh, had underlying health conditions, but we have had several that did not have any, any underlying health conditions who have died from this, this, um, virus. We, 62% of our deaths have been among residents at long-term care facilities, and 58.7 of our deaths, um, have been in non-Hispanic whites. Um, a lot of that is due to the fact that, um, many of the, of the individuals in long-term care facilities have been white. Next slide, please. When we look at our positivity rate, this is one of the trends that we're paying close attention to. Um, it is slowly increasing. Over the last seven days, um, we've been up to 10.5%. Um, and, uh, it, it has been a slow climb for us since about May 18th. Um, and we're consent, continuing to see that go up, and I expect to continue to see it go up, unfortunately. Next slide, please. Um, we are testing right now about 2,400, uh, individuals per day, and that's just through our healthcare systems. Um, we are, uh, beginning to get information from other, that some of other testing sites in our community, and we'll be able to start reporting those as well. But as you can see, um, you, the blue line are the negative test results, um, the orange are the positives, uh, and those continue to increase as we test more. Next slide, please. Um, so our average daily census in our hospital over the last seven days has been 106 patients, and you see the steady climb there as well. So we are seeing more involvement, um, uh, in patients that have needed hospitalizations, um, since about, uh, the second week in May. Next slide, please. So we are working to expand testing availability in our community. Heard a lot about that recently. Um, we've had expanded, uh, testing guidance, um, for some priority groups, uh, from the state. Um, asymptomatic individuals who have attended mass gatherings have been included as a priority group now. We've had a few glitches with some of our systems, um, over the last, uh, week or so in being able to test these individuals, but I think we've worked through most of that, and, and folks are starting to get tested in that area. Um, we've also been, received, uh, guidance from the state and from the federal government about a need for increase in testing in our community. Um, our health systems are continuing to test at facility, at their facilities, as well as the mobile sites that they have in the community. We have new retail testing locations. There are 15 CVS pharmacies and two Walmart stores that are now providing some testing within our communities. All of these sites are, um, are connected to, uh, nor, the, the federal DHHS system that allows them to bill DHHS for those individuals who do not have, um, insurance. So no one is paying a co-pay or is, um, paying for any of the tests that they're receiving through these sites. Um, there is, uh, on our website now, a, um, a testing app that allows you to locate the closest testing site to you. And we'll continue to keep that updated. We're working with emergency management to make that happen. Um, we've increased testing and wraparound services through our federal, federally qualified health centers, and they're continuing to look at how they can increase that. We're working with at least one of the centers to look at the possibility of providing some support services to individuals that test positive. And we're planning additional community-based test sites with, um, the North Carolina Division of Health and Human Services, working with our commercial laboratories. We're also working with the General Baptist State Convention to look at some potential testing sites, specifically in our minority communities. Um, and, uh, the Division of Public Health, as well as the Office of Minority Health at the state level is helping us with that. We're focusing on sites that support and provide testing for Black and Brown communities. We know that's, those are areas where we need to do more testing. We're starting to receive some additional supplies from the federal government that's coming down through the state that we're able to provide to, uh, both our hospital systems as well as to our F2HCs and others who are doing testing in the community. Um, and as I said, we're continuing to work on relationships with private entities to increase testing availability. Um, and I hope that will be kicking in here just, uh, in the next week. Next slide, please. So a little update on our congregate living sites. Um, so the state is defining congregate living sites a little more broadly than long-term care facilities. So we're using that terminology now. Um, we have been conducting routine outreach to all of those sites to provide guidance and assistance since the beginning of this. Um, we're working with the facilities that are in outbreak status to increase testing, especially among their staff. Um, and we are seeking state support in that effort. Uh, there has been some challenges with getting staff, uh, tested because they don't have health insurance, and we think we've, um, come up with a solution. We're hoping the state is going to support us in that. For those facilities that are experiencing outbreaks, we provide, um, initial guidance on infection control. We help them, uh, by coordinating PPE availability and regular follow-up with them until the outbreak ends. And we're moving towards increased frequency of testing of staff in all congregate living sites, regardless of whether they're in outbreak status. And we're hoping, um, that that will continue to increase. Uh, the, the hope is that most of them will be tested weekly, um, and that will allow us to cut down on the number of, uh, cases in these, in these sites. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, um, in terms of our vulnerable populations, we are looking for locations and identifying a number of different testing sites in minority communities. Churches have helped with that quite a bit, and we'll continue to work with them. Um, but there are other potential sites that we can look at as well. We are setting up new data feeds to monitor testing data by race and geography. We have not been getting, um, information from anyone, um, on negative tests other than just the tests themselves. We've not been getting information on demographics. It looks like we are starting to, um, we're beginning to access that through, um, our hospital systems, and the state is beginning to work with us with the information they're getting from CVS Pharmacy and some of the other, um, uh, private testers, and if we have that information, it's really going to help us have a better idea of who we're testing, because right now, all we know is who is testing positive. So we hope within the next couple of weeks, we'll have better data around that that we'll be able to share. Um, we're continuing to work with, um, key messages and up-to-date information through media partners. We've done some TV, radio, print, and web. Um, did have a conversation this afternoon with the individuals through, um, the managers, uh, of business roundtable who are doing some developing campaign, and we're working with them to make sure that the information is appropriate for our vulnerable populations and is going to be available through lots of different venues. So I'm looking forward to that as it rolls out. Um, we're also proactively outreach into minority-owned and servicing businesses and churches, um, to seek guidance on messaging, um, and best approaches to reach these communities, also to provide guidance and toolkits and signage as needed. Next slide, please. Um, unfortunately, as you can see, our, um, mobility in the county is nearing baseline levels. Um, so we're getting close to where we were before we did our stay-at-home order in terms of mobility in our community, which really is an indicator of, um, our social distancing in Mecklenburg County. Um, these numbers and this data starkly demonstrates the fact that COVID-19 is still very present threat to our community. Testing alone, contact tracing alone will not get us out of this pandemic. This is still, there is still no care and no, no cure and no vaccine for this, this virus. These numbers represent people, our neighbors, our friends, and our families. It is up to all of us to do our part, to be part of the solution. Next slide. We should not have to force people to do the right thing, and are continuing to hope that our community will step up and help us, um, do what we need to do to protect those who are most vulnerable, to help us manage this, um, so that our hospital systems are available to service us as we move into flu season, um, and that take, they can take care of the individuals that really need the care. So, um, we appreciate all the support that we get from Commissioners and the help, um, from you in terms of messaging to our community and, uh, giving us information when there's something that needs to be enforced. But as much as we can encourage our community, um, to do the right thing, uh, that's, it, the social distancing and the wearing of the mask and the washing hands is what's mattered and what's done the most good for us in the future, and that's what we need to continue to do. Next slide. And at the appropriate point, I'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it will maintain this, the same time limit, first and second round. Uh, let me begin with Commissioner Leek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question deals with, school is opening on August the 17th. Do they have any plans for how they plan to open the school system? If you don't know, just tell me, so I can move to my second question.
No, ma'am. We are working with the school system. The state issued, um, guidance on three different possible approaches, and we're working with the school system to develop all three of those approaches so they can address it appropriately, depending on what the appy shows at that time.
And I'm asking that so parents will know upfront and ahead of time. The thing that you said to us, we have 134 deaths in Mecklenburg County, since when?
That was since, um, the beginning of the epidemic, and for us, our first case, I think, was March 10th. So since then.
So 134 since March?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now, zip codes, as it relates to where the population is the strongest in, uh, having the disease. What are those zip codes?
Um, those zip codes are 28208, 28217, 28223, 28210, or that's 16. This is really small. 28215, 28213, and 281, 28212.
Do that again.
Okay, um, 28208, 28217, 28223, 28210, 28212, 28215, 28213.
All right, so do you know the numbers coming out of those, out of those zip codes?
I can get you those. What I have in front of me is the map that shows the numbers for 100,000.
And the reason I'm asking that, I want the public to know. We need to share all of our information to the public. And I also want to say thank you to, uh, the gathering of a newsletter that the Health Committee has put out, and I hope that all of you have gotten a copy of that. And whatever we can do to help you, let us know. You keep repeating, talking about the churches, yes, but there are other areas where there are large congregations of people and organizations that meet. So where are we with the churches? What are, what are the numbers in the churches now?
Um, you mean the number of positive cases in the churches?
No, no, no. How many people can we have in the churches? Cause we are going up, not going down.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
That's right.
Um, the, the, in the governor's last order, he allowed churches to convene. Um, there was recommendations for social distancing and masking, um, but at this point, I don't believe there's limitations on churches.
So it's unlimited?
It is. There's still recommendation for them to do as much virtually as they can.
That's not answering the question. And the last thing, how do we make people wear masks? We can't do it. So how do we continue to say to the public, it's your responsibility as we move about in the community to put on a mask? But in some places, people are saying you can't come in unless you do have a mask on. So how do we handle that?
Well, at this point, um, requiring a mask is up to the specific businesses and places that are requiring that. Um, what we've found in a couple of counties that have required masks is there's no way to really enforce it, and they're not seeing that the requiring of mask-wearing has made much difference in their communities.
Okay, my last question is with the long lines we keep hearing about on the news, uh, uh, serving and testing our people. Why are there long lines?
Um, yes, ma'am, there are lines, and that's why we're hoping to expand the availability of testing over the next week.
And thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioner Darrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gibby, thank you for, um, your report this evening. Um, I, I want to start out by saying, number one, um, I am in favor wholeheartedly, um, with an understanding that, um, all the towns do not agree, but, uh, I'm in favor of us mandating masks. So I just want to go on record to say that, in whatever way that that looks like, whoever we have cooperation with, um, I would like to see that. The second thing, um, Gibby, I, I want to talk about, uh, you gave us a slide referencing children, and it was multi-system inflammatory, um, something. I apologize, I forgot the, um.
Syndrome.
Syndrome, thank you. Is that the Kawasaki disease? Is that what we're?
Yes.
Something different?
That's, uh, that's what they, it's been named, um, because it's specifically related to ki- children who have COVID. It's called multi-system inflammation syndrome in children.
Okay, and so now we are seeing, tho- those are our first cases in children that, that present themselves with, uh, the Kawasaki?
Yes.
Okay, um, it, is, is that something that, when we look at other communities, is that something that has, I, I, I've been hearing a lot about it, um, you know, maybe a, a few weeks ago, and, and haven't heard that much about it. Is that something that continue to manifest across the country, and, and we expect those numbers to go up?
We, um, you know, I, I, I agree, we haven't heard much about it recently. Uh, we know there's been one death in North Carolina from it, but I've. We know there's been one death in North Carolina from it, but I've not heard of other counties that have experienced cases. Either that or they're not reporting them. The state hasn't reported many cases, although they're asking clinicians to report those cases to them. So. Evidently, it's still fairly rare. It's just pretty devastating when it happens.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. The, the next piece, you referenced a, a new. Something on our site where we provide information on testing locations. That on the public health page, is that where that's found?
Yes, or the, or the county website as well. It's on both places. It is a, it is a site locator, so you can actually put your address in and find the closest site available to you.
And is that on the mechnc.gov site? Because I've never.
They have a site, but I'm not sure it's as specific as ours is. This is, this is a new site that went up late last week. Emergency operation. But it is on our, our county site.
Okay, I, I don't see, I, I, I don't see it on the homepage of, of our county site and suggestion. To the manager for consideration. If maybe we could add that underneath, on that side where we have the other widgets with the toolkit and the business roundtable suggestions. So that people could easily access, because I get a lot of questions about. Testing locations and, and with Atrium, it changes from week to week. So having it readily accessible, going to the mechnc.gov site would be great if it could be front and center. Just a suggestion for consideration, Madam Manager.
We'll get that fixed tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
I, I agree with you completely. We'll make that change.
Thank you. The other thing, Gibby, I wanted to ask you. As it relates to an increase in testing, which you talked about in the last presentation. One of the things I wanted to know if you considered, I know you're leveraging churches, I, I, I think that's a great resource, right there, hubs in the community. Have we given any thought to doing, you know, status testing at our recreation centers?
That has, that has not come up yet. I, I think we're open to any sites. You know, so we'll consider those as well.
Okay, Commissioner Harden.
Thank you, Chairman. So Gibby, I want to thank you for your presentation. It's, it's really helpful to have slides and I know it takes a lot. I know you're, I know you're very busy, but it's. It, it, it is very helpful to have the presentation, so thank you for that. I know that we are at, now at the highest level of hospitalization that we ever have been. Is that correct?
Yes.
What is the surge capacity for the hospitals?
You know, at one point, we had specific numbers from them for their surge. And they're, I know they're working that on a regular basis, but right now, the data we get from them doesn't provide that information. What I can tell you is that right now, the hospitals are running around 75 to 77%. Utilization. So they still have, you know, between 25 and 23% availability. They did open up a number of elective surgeries and they do have people coming in for service that had put it off because of COVID. So they do have the capacity and the ability to decrease. What they have in the hospital again, if they needed to do that. So right now, based on the modeling that we're seeing nationally and the work that the two hospital systems are doing with us around that. We're not seeing a concern around their capacity right now.
What would the number have to be for hospitalization to see, to raise concern? So we're at 126 right now. Like when it, what, what would be the number that we would go, okay, you know, we're concerned?
So 126 is just the number of COVID. It, it basically would be the number of, number one, we want to watch the number of, of in, the increase in COVID patients. Because that's related to this pandemic, but we also need to keep an eye on their total. Capacity. And that's a, that is a whole nother slide that we could provide if y'all would like to see that.
I would, because I don't, I think people have it in their mind that we, we, there's no, that we're not ever going back. Like there's no situation that we would ever go back to stay at home. Helpful to people to know that, like, if we get to this point, we actually, we actually might have to go back. And so I think it's helpful for people to know what that is. Because I, I do feel like, Gibby, I appreciate what you said about people doing the right thing. But I, I think people, you know, we need people to wear masks. And I agree, I am, I am, I am too, and with Commissioner Darrell, that I am willing to. Implement mandatory masks because I think that, that. You know, I think that that as a compromise to going back to stay at home. As an additional measure to ward off, you know, you know, that, that returning to stay at home. Is a, it, when it's positioned that way, I think people, we'll see more masks, but I have to tell you, I see a lot of people not. Crying with the, with wearing masks when socially distancing can't be done. And I'm worried and I'm, I'm worried that, that, that people don't realize that we could go back. Can you, can you speak to the fact that? There could be a certain.
She's already told us that now.
What'd you say? I'm sorry. Anyway, so Gibby, can you just talk about that for just a minute?
Um, yes, I, you know, I, I, again, we're, we're watching the data daily. And also watching what is happening at the state level that is informing all of this and. I'm thinking we're going to hear from the governor later this week or early next week about. What his thoughts are on phase three. But you know, if, if our numbers continue to climb, if we don't manage this so that our hospitals can provide care. Then at that point, we would have to, and, and there is a line that. If we cross that, then we've got to, we've got to worry about what we have the capacity to do. So, you know, I, I don't think there's an unlimited number of cases that we can take care of in this community. At some point.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gibby, can you, is it possible for you to describe? The folks who are hospitalized? I think there's maybe a sense that, that people have that, oh, it's just old people. You know, I'm not an old person, so I don't have to worry about, you know, I'm not going to die from this. You know, I don't have a compromised immune system. Can you, can you talk about, you know, the folks that are tested and are positive and are sick? To what, like the, the folks that are hospitalized, how did they get to that point? You know, is it? Do you know what I'm trying to get at? Like, can you paint the picture at all about? What this COVID-19, what suffering looks like besides the, I mean, besides dying?
You know, the, this is a respiratory infection for the most part, although we have discovered over time that there are other symptoms. That people experience with this. But the main issue is respiratory and. I will tell you, as someone who had asthma as a child, not being able to breathe. Is probably one of the worst experiences that you can have. So being short of breath, not being able to catch your breath. Having to have help with your breathing. All of those things are things that people are experiencing with this. And some of it, whether they're hospitalized or not, even they, they may not be severe enough to be in the hospital, will still experience those sorts of symptoms. And I mean, the other thing to understand is that if you are infected, you may be. Stuck in the house for, you know, a couple of weeks. You probably won't feel well enough to go out unless you're one of those lucky people who's asymptomatic, but you still need to be isolated. And so there's any number of consequences of becoming infected. And the more we can control this, the better.
Thank you, Gibby. I, I think, I, I agree with my colleagues that, that driving home the message about. Wearing masks equals not having to turn backwards. And so for, for the folks who are very cavalier and think. You know, nothing's going to happen to me. I don't need to wear a mask, you know. If, if folks could, could realize that they're shooting themselves in the foot. By, by not adhering to the recommendation. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think maybe, maybe that message is a really important message. That. That if you don't want to turn back, you need to turn on wearing a mask. And so anyways, I, I just think somehow people are not getting the correct message. And I don't know if it's just a political thing or if it's getting twisted, but. I think that if we could really talk about the consequences more. Maybe it would help get a little bit more compliance. So. Anyways, I, I am also concerned about ramping up to our 20,000 per day. And I'm not getting a super confident feeling that that's going to happen anytime soon. And I just wondered if you had a projected. You know, it's going to take a month to get there or it's going to take, you know, longer than that or a couple of weeks. Like, what's your estimate on getting to the 20,000?
Well, I, I don't know if we'll get to the 20,000. I think what we're hoping for is ramping up testing. Over time and watching to see how many people are coming in to be tested. We can rec, you know, it's like wearing a mask. We can recommend for people to come in for testing, but they have to make the decision to come in. So we want to make sure that we're making it as available as is needed in our community and. I've been having that conversations with the state about ramping it up and seeing how it goes and we'll see whether we need to get to 20,000 or not.
Thank you, Gibby. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Powell.
Hello, this is Commissioner Powell. The first thing I want to say is some good news. So it was a big surprise that I went to the grocery store yesterday and I only saw one person. In Huntersville, Huntersville Publix, only one person didn't have a mask. So everybody else had a mask and I was so happy. I thought, wow, this is progress in. In my district. And then I'm getting telephone calls from different media outlets about. How is the county health department involved with our country clubs? Because one of the country clubs in my district is currently, functions of it are shut down. So can you, can you speak to that?
We've been getting questions about country clubs and golf courses as well. We do not have any information, I double checked on that this afternoon about. About infections that are specifically related to a country club or a golf course. Now, if, if they had had multiple members who have been infected and they've chosen to close some things down, that's the only thing that I can think of. Because we have not seen any, any specific clusters based on. The contact tracing that we've done with individuals to say that it occurred. In a facility like that. So I, you know, I, as I said, I, I double checked on that this afternoon. Because it has come up from the media today as well.
I share the concerns, the same concerns my colleagues share. It's such a simple thing. It's so simple to wear a mask. And it can prevent so many hardships in the future. It can prevent us from going backwards. People that we love getting sick. It's hard to, hard to wrap my head around why people aren't wearing masks. I do understand some people can't. And the trends don't, they don't look good. Can you talk, I don't think people understand how important it is in Mecklenburg County. Especially important in Mecklenburg County because we are a regional healthcare provider. We just provide healthcare for the people who live in Mecklenburg, but we provide it for the surrounding counties. Multiple surrounding counties. And can you speak to why that is like extra important to Mecklenburg?
Exactly. You know, we, we do serve, our hospital systems serve a large area. And so there are individuals coming from any number of, I think at least 11 counties, including a couple in South Carolina. For care in this community and if we're overrun with cases, it is, we, we, you know, at some point. If we're, we, we have too many cases, the hospitals are going to hit a wall. In terms of being able to care. And I, I got to tell you, my biggest concern is for September. Our hospitals are usually pretty full when we're in flu season. And if we're full from flu and we've got COVID on top of that, then I think we have some things to be concerned about. So it goes back to needing to manage this, to keep our numbers down. It's going to be important for people to get flu shots this year. We're going to need people to step up and, and. Wear their masks, social distance, wash their hands and get their flu shot. It's going to be critical for us to be able to manage this into the fall.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Gibby, for your presentation. My questions are a little different. I've had a lot of people talk to me. Concerned about the death rates of their loved ones and. That they were listed as COVID, but they didn't think they, that was the reason. And I have. Tried to read a lot about this, you know, and national, across the nation in different newspapers. And it, it seems like there, the standard. For death is, has some wiggle room is an easy way to explain it. And it's not as clear cut as, you know, someone has a stroke or a heart attack. And, you know, I saw language like. If the circumstances are compelling within a reasonable degree of certainty. You know, or if it's presumptive, maybe somebody had another health, they were in the hospital for a heart problem or something else and maybe they. They, they also thought they had COVID, whether they had a test or not, but that COVID was listed. And so I guess I would really like. And I wanted to, you know, I was wondering, we talk about these deaths and we talk about a lot of them are people who are older in nursing homes. But how, how do our, our numbers compare over recent years of people dying from strokes and. Heart attacks and other, other natural causes? And are those number, if those numbers are the same. Then, you know, I would like to tell these people that they shouldn't worry about it, but if those numbers have dropped and, and now it's, you know, COVID. I, I just think they deserve to know that. And I, I, I've had several, and I've heard. I've heard comments from people who are medical professionals who say. You know, if they're older, it's COVID. And that really concerned me. And I was just wondering if you had talked about this or you were aware of this or. You know, I don't know what to tell people who feel this way and I personally feel this way. So. And, you know, is it, if somebody's in the hospital and they, and they have COVID, but they have another problem also, and if they pass away. How, what's on the, what is?
Death certificate.
What's on the death certificate? Does it say?
If they've tested.
Or does it say COVID? And how is that number, how is that number, how is that calculated in? How is that number, how is that calculated in your numbers?
So um, you know, I mean, when you have individuals who have multiple health conditions that could contribute to death, um, it's always hard to determine exactly what the factor was that caused it. I, so I I understand what you're saying about that. The problem is, at this point in time, if someone tests positive for COVID and dies, that's expected by the state and by the CDC to be reported as a COVID death. So uh, that's the guidance that medical providers have, is that that has to be on the death certificate. That doesn't mean they don't put a secondary cause of death, or um, they may even put COVID as a secondary cause as opposed to a primary cause, but it's still counted as a COVID death. Um, and that's, that's the way it's being counted in the country. We can look at the data and see if there's been any change in the number of deaths from strokes and diabetes and those sorts of things. We haven't looked at that yet, but we could, we can take a look and see if there's any difference.
I think my time is up. I had another question, but oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank, I guess that concludes my comments.
Yeah, you'll have another opportunity. Commissioner Fuller.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I I think uh, I think we're losing the messaging war. Because as much as we say you should put your mask on, wash your hands, et cetera. The message we are really sending is that we're inexorably moving toward reopening. No matter what the data is, we're moving toward reopening. And I feel like at the beginning of this, we in Mecklenburg County, we were leading. We were on the front edge. I don't think we're on the front edge anymore. It feels like we're just sitting on the sidelines watching this happen. And as was mentioned a few moments ago, we're up above the level where we were when we felt like we had issue a stay at home order. Yet, we're kind of like the frog in the pot of water. It was cold when we put the frog in. You turn up the heat. It's still going up. You know what's going to happen is the frog is going to be cooked before he ever knows it. That's what I feel we are doing. We are watching the heat go up. And we're doing pretty much nothing about it. And that's at a time when we're seeing articles in national papers about a surge of the pandemic in the south, in southern states. Even next door to us in South Carolina. We see a president who's going to have a rally uh, in Oklahoma with thousands of people together. People feel like we're, we're on the end points of this, not in the middle, not at the beginning. People feel like we're at the end. So we have inconsistent messaging. So people are not listening. That's why I believe, as some other commissioners have mentioned, we need to act. And one of the things I think we need to do is to require masks. It seems like the least that we can do. But I'm appreciative of the opinions that others might have about that. And so I'm going to make a motion right now.
Thank you.
I'm going to move that, and I do move, that we get a recommendation at our next meeting on whether we, as a county, uh, will require masks or face coverings in Mecklenburg County. And I'd like that recommendation to be brought to us at our next meeting. That in addition to the recommendation, I'd like information if we do decide to put face masks as a requirement in our county, what the potential implications of that are. So my motion is to have staff bring back to us for our decision as to whether or not to require masking or face covering in Mecklenburg County. I believe this is a policy decision for the board. It should not be left to the emergency operations center. Uh, and so I think it ought to be brought to the board for its action. That is my motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lee, second.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner that staff bring back a recommendation relative to wearing masks in Mecklenburg County. I want to tell you, Trevor, you stole my thunder. It is written in my note. But I certainly like what you've done. So moving properly seconded, let's go to the roll call room. Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes, with a stop beside it.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem.
No, because we don't have the permission of the the towns. And it's my understanding from I remember the manager telling us that that we could not do this because the towns would have to approve. So could could I ask the manager to clarify that?
I I think that is for a declaration, emergency declaration. So we no longer have an emergency declaration. I think what Commissioner Fuller is asking that the uh, Board of County Commissioners go on record in stating their policy position as it relates to wearing masks.
Thank you.
So um, just to respond to Commissioner Cuthem, the the Board of County Commissioners cannot impose that requirement across the county in the city and the town. So as long as you understand where your policy recommendations reach, I just want to make sure we're clear about that.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Cuthem, your vote is no?
Yes, given what the manager just said and my memory of that, yes, we can do this, so.
All right, Commissioner Fuller.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you you, it sounds like we probably should have had discussion on this motion, but I I I mean, obviously I will vote aye in favor of this, but I would say that we ought to be leading our other municipalities on this question and not simply assuming that they will answer no when we decide that we want to uh, make this a requirement in Mecklenburg County. So my vote is aye.
Okay, did we get Commissioner Scarborough back? Okay. All right, so Commissioner, um, good gracious. So the chair votes are, Madam Clerk, the results?
Of those voting, um, it would be um, eight to one since Ms. Scarborough was still part of the meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, so I was the last one. Did not make comments relative to the report. Just just share with uh, my concerns right now. Uh, one that Commissioner um, Fuller just um, brought forth. I I will tell you that I've I've been reading uh, NICO news and news across the country. And uh, lots of other communities are recommending masks. And they do have some protocols and exceptions to when you should not be mandated to wear masks. So if the staff would do a little research, I think that's already out there. Um, I know there were people with disabilities and other medical reasons as to why people couldn't wear masks. And so those were a part of the exceptions. But I'll just be looking forward to what staff brings back. Gibby, in your report earlier, you talked about staff at the facilities being tested. And I guess my concern is if everybody's in the facility, why isn't everybody being tested?
So um, you know, when we first started seeing outbreaks in these facilities, um, it it was taking some doing just to get everybody tested in the facilities. But now it's almost automatic. Um, once they have one individual testing positive, they'll they'll test everybody in the facility. So um, the the concern about testing staff is they're the ones that are coming in and out of the facility. That doesn't mean that we won't continue to test within the facility, but the biggest concern is those individuals who are there during the day or during the night and then go back out to the community and then come back in. Um, so that's, they're the ones that are being recommended to be tested the most. It doesn't, it doesn't mean we won't be testing the the residents as well.
Okay, I I want to go back to the mask for a minute. Because part of our solution to getting compliance is having our corporate community make the same requirements. Um, I'm sort of like, uh, Elaine. When you go places that says you must have a mask to enter, everybody who comes in wears a mask. So if every business required people to have a mask to enter, people would realize they couldn't go anywhere without one. And so that that's part of uh, what I believe will help us get there is to have all of these businesses ask people to wear masks or require people to wear masks to enter their facility. Uh, I think that will go a whole that that will go a long way in terms of helping us reach our goal of having uh, everybody wear, wear masks. And then lastly, um, I will say that I I I've I've watched Governor Cuomo so much. Uh, I'm certainly a big fan. But one of the things he mentioned when we first went through COVID, he said, from a national perspective, if New York is having the biggest problem, then focus your efforts on New York and then tear down with the places that have fuel problems. If our biggest problems are in nursing homes, that's where our focus ought to be. It just seems now that we're just, we're we're all over the place. I would like to know what our strategy is. Uh, and maybe I'm missing it. But I just feel like we're all over the place. I I I'd like to know, in in fact, when we first started, there was a, there was a concerted effort. We looked at people who had the um, the um, the five um, what, chronic illnesses. And we focused on that group because they were the ones who were most likely to die if they caught COVID. And I saw that as a strategy. With the nursing homes going into the, I saw that as a strategy. I'd like to know what's our overall strategy right now?
So um, when we get a notification that there has been a case in a nursing home, whether it's a staff person or an individual, we immediately be in touch with the administration in that in that facility and work with them to get everybody tested. That happens right off the bat. Um, at that point, we then also have, we've got our environmental health staff as well as medic works with us on this and our regional hospital system uh, to make some visits to these facilities to make sure that their infection control is in good place, that their policies and procedures are in good place, that people are actually complying with it. We help them make decisions about how to locate positives within the, within the the environment so that they're not being, um, they're not exposing other people. And so that staff are separated, you know, staff that are working with COVID positive are sort of separated from staff that are working with those that aren't COVID positive. Um, we are regularly in touch with those facilities uh, throughout the process while they're still while they're still in outbreak status. Um, we work with them, uh, we have conversations with them uh, almost every day. And understanding what uh, what their PPE needs are, we've been providing that through um, the EOC, um, and making sure that they have what they need. We're doing any education that we need to do with staff to make sure that they're implementing uh, the the infection control policies that they need to be implementing. And in a couple of places where there was not sufficient staffing, we've worked with the state to make sure that staffing is being brought in. So there's sufficient staffing to take care of the residents that are in that facility. We're also restricting new residents from coming into facilities that are in outbreak status. That's, that is standard for any communicable disease outbreak within a a facility. Um, we've been working with the state, um, if you don't license these facilities, the state licensed these facilities through a different branch of state government, um, and uh, they have been somewhat involved, but not as involved as we would like them to be with some guidance to these facilities. So we've been we've been trying to do as much of that as we can ourselves. Um, but we don't, we don't license them, so we don't have the same level of control over what they do. But most of them are really eager to get out of outbreak status. So they're listening to us. They're doing what we're asking them to do. The big challenge that we're seeing are staff who, um, because we are seeing staff working in multiple facilities. We have staff who may work two shifts in one facility and then go and work two shifts in another facility. So there's sort of this cross pollination, unfortunately, that may be happening within some of the facilities. So we've been working with them to make sure, again, that staff are getting tested regularly and trying to prevent them from transferring COVID themselves. So I, and then we we work with them until they are um, three weeks without a case before they come out of outbreak status. And at this point, we're we're not shifting away from that, but we also are starting to work with those facilities that aren't in outbreak status to start testing their staff regularly. Um, because that's how COVID is coming into their facility. It's not, if it's not already there, then it's coming from those that are coming into the facilities. These facilities still aren't, aren't receiving visitors. So it's the staff that um, that are out in our communities with the community spread that are bringing it in. So those are, those are the, um, we can outline that specifically for you with a more detail if you'd like. But that's the basics of what we do um, on a daily basis. We have staff that are assigned specifically to each facility um, to work with that facility, to get to know the administration and to make sure that what's happening in that facility needs to.
Okay, a- and I would appreciate if that strategy was, would be documented.
Yep, I'll take care of that.
Lastly, I I want to tell you, I like the three, the three Ws. I wish that could be broadly distributed. Um, I'd like to see that on the storefront of every business or establishment that I I might go into. I I like that. Okay, this is the follow up round, two minutes, if you need it. Commissioner Lee.
No comment at this time, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jarrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take uh, just a second to comment around and 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 to thank our partners at um, at Atrium and Novant. Earlier, uh, some months ago, I was um, highly upset with the lack of uh, access to testing for uh, members of, uh, people in my district. And uh, thanks to our Assistant County Manager, Anthony Trotman, uh, working with me and connecting me with and um, at Novant and Dr. Jerome Williams and uh, Rocky McGregor and at Atrium, uh, Trent Legree and uh, Keneal Culpman. So I did want to just shout that out and lift that up to say how appreciative I am and and having these additional testing sites within the community uh, makes a huge difference. Uh, I get that, those are the majority of the calls that I get. Um, where can people get tested? Lines are around the corner, Stratford Richardson Y line today, although testing did not take place because of the rain. But people do want to get tested. So I did want to lift up our community partners and I also wanted to give a shout out to uh, Anthony Trotman for uh, helping me navigate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Okay, um, Commissioner Harden.
Thank you. I I don't know if you can answer this related to uh, the other um, state of emergency that we're under, the, for the protests or or do we, or do we still have two state of emergencies going on right now? Or no, we have only one?
No, we have two. We have two.
We have two?
Yes, we do.
And is there any discussion, um, Dana, one around the protests is going to expire or or what the, what the status of that one is?
Not at this time. I haven't heard back from um, the city or emergency management about um, expiring that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner McDowell.
I have no further comments or questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Powell.
I have two things. We requested a recommendation on what when we voted, we we requested a recommendation. And I'm guessing there's already a lot of chatter about that. But I have great But I have great respect for the towns that I represent. And I expect that we will, um, you know, listen to feedback from the leaders in our towns as part of the recommendation. I just wanted to say that publicly. Like to ask for, um, from our, uh, from today, but in the next, you know, two or three days, if we could get a percentage of people in each age bracket, I'm especially looking at the forty to fifty-nine year old age bracket. Uh, the percentage of people who have underlying health conditions. Because I think that, um, that's part of what the community needs to understand is that there are many people that aren't senior citizens, many, many, who have underlying health conditions, who are at risk. And so I think that needs to be part of our messaging. So I'd like to request that information.
Okay.
Is that something you could get, Gibby?
Yes, we'll provide that.
Thank you. And that, that concludes my questions. I, I really want to thank you for all your work because it's just never ending. And sometimes I, I just don't know if we express the gratitude that we feel. So thank you so much for your commitment to public health and safety. I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Cottam?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Gibby, just to continue where I was in talking about the, um, COVID on the death certificate, uh, when there was, when it might not have been the actual reason, but just could be accompanying it, I'm worried about how those numbers are being, um, evaluated. Um, I wanted to ask, cause you mentioned people who have been tested. I, I was also talking about people who have not been tested, but still had COVID on their death certificates. Uh, and I, I just, um, this just concerns me, I've had people call me about this, I've experienced it myself. So, um, I just wanted you to make you aware of that. And, uh, I mean, I don't think hospitals are trying to, you know, because I've heard stories about them earning more money from, uh, for Medicare patients, um, who have COVID, whether they live or they pass away. Um, but it's more about the credibility and accuracy of the numbers. So, um, I just present that to you, we can talk further about it. But, um, I have had several people, um, email me and call me about this and I have experienced it myself, thank you.
Mm-hmm, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Foel?
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, um, uh, you asked a question, uh, during your time. Um, and I wrote down your question, what is our overall plan? Um, and I didn't hear an answer to that question. And, uh, I think that's the concern that I have been raising for quite some time. And I'm going to keep raising it until we do something about it. Uh, and I think that's what, uh, occasioned, uh, my motion tonight. I think there are policy questions that we ought to be considering as a board. We should not be leaving it to the emergency operations, uh, management. Um, these are questions that we as elected leaders are called upon to, uh, to give answers to. And, um, I regret that we had to do it this way, but, um, I want to continue to send the message to our emergency operations department that, um, that, uh, that these are questions that, uh, elected leaders have to make. And, um, and I want to again encourage them to understand that they have to involve elected leaders in what they are doing. Because we are the ones who are called upon to be held responsible. And, uh, we can't fulfill that responsibility if we are not engaged in the conversations. And so the fact that, for example, we are, uh, essentially waiting to see what the governor will do, what the state will do, and not take a leadership role for our people, that is a policy choice. And I'm not comfortable with that choice while we're watching our numbers, uh, grow in this county. I, I, I don't think it's sufficient for us to say we're waiting for guidance from the state or we're waiting for guidance from the federal government. I, I don't think that's enough. And so, um, I'm going to continue to raise this issue because I feel like we have, um, ceded our authority and our leadership. And, um, I don't like being in that position. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Scarborough?
So all of a sudden, I'm, I'm just listening to people, so right now I don't have any additional questions or, or comments.
Okay, um, so again, let me just simply remind our community, uh, we're asking you to wear masks, wash hands often, and to social distance. The alternative is we go back to level one. It's really that simple. Um, and so the things that people enjoy today will no longer be enjoyed. I, I'm just amazed at the city and the state of New York and what they were able to accomplish, um, given where they were when they simply followed these three rules. Uh, a- and, and I'm certain we can do it, we've demonstrated that we were able to do it before, but for whatever reason, people have kind of gotten laxed about that. But the alternative is far worse. And so I can't impress upon people enough, um, that they need to follow those rules. And I'm looking forward to, uh, the recommendation coming before the board. I know that everybody won't be happy with it, but I tell you, places that are doing it are seeing results. And, um, if we don't do it, um, then we'll be blamed later. So I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what that, that recommendation to the board might be. Um, so that ends our time with that item. We move now to our consent agenda.
Uh, Commissioner Dunlap, we have one other item to
I'm sorry.
review, which is our proposed spending plan for the coronavirus relief fund dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to turn it over to Michael Bryan, who's going to walk me through the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Dunlap, members of the board, County Manager Diorio. The purpose of this presentation is to present a proposal for spending the thirty-nine million dollars that Mecklenburg County has received from the federal government to support our response to the coronavirus. Before I present the proposal, I'd like to begin the presentation with some contextual information. The CARES Act was passed by Congress and signed into law on March twenty-seventh. It includes two-point-five trillion to aid individuals, families, businesses, state, local, and tribal governments. The CARES Act established the coronavirus relief fund in the amount of one hundred and fifty billion dollars. Mecklenburg County received thirty-nine-point-two million. Next slide, please. This slide is probably the most important one in the entire presentation because it summarizes the requirements for the coronavirus relief fund. There are so many needs in our community during these unprecedented times and the thirty-nine million dollars can help address a lot of these needs. However, there are very specific guidance that determines the use of the funds. In other words, although something may be a priority for this community, it must meet the funding requirements to be an eligible expense. For every proposal received, we have to ask ourselves, how does the investment clearly respond to the coronavirus? As noted on the slide, these payments may only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-nineteen, or not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, which is the date of the CARES Act enactment, and were incurred between March first, twenty-twenty, and December thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Funds may not be used to replace revenues lost due to COVID-nineteen, and any funds not spent will be returned to treasury. Next slide, please. This slide provides a summary of expenses incurred to date. In total, the county has spent seventeen-point-nine million dollars related to COVID-nineteen. Of this amount, eighty-point-two million is eligible for the coronavirus relief fund, leaving a difference of nine-point-seven million that is ineligible for coronavirus reimbursement. As background, the amount of ineligible expenses for the coronavirus relief fund includes hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars for some hardware for our data centers, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars for food purchase for the hotels, one-point-five million dollars for emergency leave, five-point-five million dollars for small business support, and one-point-five million dollars, which is the hotel cost, which is reimbursable with FEMA. Next slide, please. This slide provides a projection of the future costs that are eligible for the coronavirus relief fund. In addition to the eight-point-two million of eligible expenses to date, we are projecting an additional fifteen-point-eight million in eligible expenses by December thirtieth, bringing the total amount of eligible costs to twenty-four million dollars. These additional costs include four-point-nine million dollars for workstation alterations, enhanced facility cleaning, and supplies. An additional three-hundred thousand dollars for portable sanitation, restrooms, and hygiene kits for the homeless. The increase in the other category is for targeted food assistance in the Asian community, staff support and finance, and for RFP for grants management assistance and consultation to ensure we identify all opportunities to offset costs associated with responding to COVID-nineteen. The increase in the public health category is primarily funding to support medic salaries and expenses associated with COVID-nineteen, marketing, and contact tracing. The impact of COVID-nineteen is still unfolding. As a result, the proposal includes five million dollars in contingency for unknown expenses and new guidance that allow us to expand the use of the funds. And the personnel costs include salary costs such as differential pay for the sheriff's office. After factoring the projected future costs, there is fifteen-point-two million dollars available from the thirty-nine-point-two million coronavirus relief fund for additional investments to respond to COVID-nineteen. Next slide, please. So the proposed funding plan factors impactful investments that can be made immediately and initiatives that will require additional planning. The proposal gives consideration to the towns and unincorporated areas. It includes investments that clearly aligns to the guidance and could be tracked for accounting purposes. We have to be good fiscal stewards of the funds and assure that the funds are spent on its original intent. All investments must address COVID-nineteen and be fully spent by December thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And also the proposal gives consideration to other funding sources available for COVID-nineteen response, which includes the city of Charlotte, which has received one-hundred-and-fifty-four-point-five million. Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools has received thirty-three-point-six million. Central Piedmont Community College has received ten-point-eight. And just recently, the elections office has received one million dollars in funding for the November general election. This one million dollars will support costs associated with face masks, face shields, safety goggles, gloves, and sanitizer and cleaning supplies. Also, this funding will support costs associated with expanding early voting sites. Next slide, please. The proposed spending plan will support investments in these four broad categories with targeted investments. The community response category will provide general assistance to individuals, families, and seniors impacted by COVID-nineteen. The continuity of operations category funds investments required to return the organization to full operations. Economic development provides financial support to businesses that have been severely impacted by COVID-nineteen. And investments in the emergency response category will support ongoing investments in emergency response services associated with COVID-nineteen. Next slide. This slide provides examples of investments that we intend to make within the immediate future, action that we are in a position to take now. Get in with two-point-eight million dollars to offer support to the towns, unincorporated areas of the county, and nonprofits. I'll go into more detail on the next slide regarding this investment. Also, there is one-point-five million dollars available for general assistance such as rent and utilities. The proposal includes a one-million-dollar investment to support food pantries throughout the entire county. Also, one million dollars to distribute PPEs throughout the community. With the increase in COVID-nineteen cases that has been referenced by Gibby Harris, this is a very critical investment. There's one million dollars to support a proposal prepared by the serving seniors during COVID-nineteen task force for grants to ensure the seniors in this community receive sufficient support during these unprecedented times. The proposal includes five-hundred thousand dollars to design a community engagement process and COVID-nineteen communication plan designed to reach the high-risk population. And the proposal includes three-hundred thousand dollars to expand the county's senior nutrition program. Next slide. This slide provides more details regarding investments in the towns and nonprofits. I will not read each one of these, however, in short. The manager has received proposals from the towns of Matthews, Huntersville, Davidson, Pernillias, and Mint Hill. These requests seeks reimbursements for costs incurred to date as well as the projected costs through December thirtieth. The investments also include costs associated with providing general assistance to the residents in these townships and offset expenses associated with emergency response. There is a two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar placeholder for any additional submissions from the towns, the unincorporated areas, and nonprofits. The lower half of the table provides a list of investments to support nonprofits located throughout the community. One-point-three million dollars will go towards providing general assistance, and several of these investments and nonprofits have been endorsed by the town managers. County staff will review each proposal to ensure that the requests meet the coronavirus relief fund requirement. Next slide. This slide provides examples of investments that will require additional time to plan. Additional time will allow an opportunity to identify partners that can assist with delivering these critical services. In addition to identifying providers, we will have to review proposals to ensure alignment with the guidance and ultimately draft and execute a contract. This additional investment that staff will spend time planning for includes the digital divide, housing assistance, investments in senior programs and supportive services, which include assisted living facilities and nursing homes, small business assistance, mental health support, workforce development, and working families. Next slide, please. So the final slide provides the next steps. The manager will like feedback on the proposal. Be mindful that all funds must be spent by December thirtieth. The board will only have one regular meeting each month beginning in July through September as you begin your summer schedule. Depending on your feedback, plan will be finalized. Staff will move forward with identifying vendors, reviewing proposals for alignment to the CRF guidance, and draft and execute contracts. Staff will provide status updates to the board on specific initiatives and briefings on new guidance, and will continue to assess other needs and bring back proposals for spending the contingency. And last, staff intends to come back to brief the board on the planned investments at the next regular meeting. And last, staff intends to come back to brief the board on the planned investments at the next regular meeting on July seventeenth. July seventh. Chairman Dunlap, that concludes my presentation. Joining me and the county manager is senior assistant to the county manager, Scarlett Tanner, who is very familiar with the guidance, and our CFO, Sarah Cunningham, who along with her team has played a major part in providing oversight of the COVID nineteen expenses.
Well, first of all, let me thank you for your recommendation. If, 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 for my colleagues, if you recall, at our last meeting, we asked the county manager to bring back some recommendations, and I shared with each of you that if you had suggestions and recommendations that you would forward that to the county manager as she developed what has been brought up for tonight. I want to specifically thank the staff for sharing all that will take place in order to spend this money, which is why there's such an urgency. The idea that you have to, you can't just hire people. You gotta vet vendors, you gotta do contracts and RFPs and all these other things before you can even get to the point of even spending the money. So I think this was a, a, um, a great presentation in that it also helped the board become familiar with the process necessary before you get to the spending process. So at this time, we'll open the floor for additional questions and comments. Hopefully, we can do this in one round. Let's start Commissioner Harden.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, I think it's a great presentation. I, I can, I appreciate, I could see the feedback from commissioners in the presentation. So I really appreciate that. I want to thank the county manager and, and thank Ryan for, you know, you know, integrating our, our recommendations. And I just want to say that I, um, I, I, you, you know, I know that you're, you said, you know, we're going to go into this summer session, and I just wanted, I think getting, I think getting this, this program organized and out is super important. And so I just want to say that, you know, I, I'm available for Zoom meetings as we need to, to do whatever we need to do to get this organized and out the door. So I just wouldn't want our, I wouldn't want our formal meeting process to stop, you know, any, any forward motion that you're making on this. So that's the only thing I would have to say. So again, it was a great presentation. And I think, I think, I think we just need to get moving on it. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question on slide, on mine, it's slide four. I'm not sure if on Mr. Bryant's, it's on slide three. The, let's see, the graph, yeah, nope, nope, yeah, that one. Okay, so I was just trying to understand the, the difference column. So, okay, on housing and homelessness, we, we spent three hundred thousand, but only forty-eight thousand was eligible. So can you sort of help me understand, you know, what's, what, how come it wasn't eligible, a lot of our expenditures?
Well, it, it really comes back down, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, to the guidance. As noted here, specific to housing and homelessness, we incurred three hundred thousand dollars in expenses, and of that amount, two hundred and fifty-two thousand is not eligible because it is tied to food that was purchased for the hotels.
It's, it's tied to food, did you say?
That's right. Food that was purchased for the hotels.
Two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars was food? Wow, okay, okay, wow, all right. Um, so on the next slide, it's showing, uh, for housing and homelessness, forty-eight thousand eligible, and then future, three oh seven seven ninety. So that's going to be spent a different way than, than the previous funds.
That's correct. On this slide, we're sharing with you the future calls that are eligible for the coronavirus relief fund, in particular, that additional three hundred and seven thousand dollars in the housing and homelessness category, that is tied to funding portable sanitation, restrooms, and hygiene kits for the homeless. This was something that was raised by Commissioner Coughlin a couple of meetings back, and the manager wanted to make sure that we give consideration to that area.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. And then on slide eight, um, let's see. It's, let's see where it says general assistance for rental and utilities. Is that like crisis assistance ministry? Is that where those funds are, or is this a different program, or?
Well, this is funding that would come from the coronavirus relief fund. However, crisis assistance is one of the providers that we're considering partnering with to help us distribute these funds.
Right, okay, so that's what I was getting at. So they, so they would be the ones to, that folks would go through to get these funds.
That is a provider that we're considering partnering with, yes.
But that would be, that would be in addition to the proposals that you made for the organizations within the towns. So that would be, that's separate than what you've already proposed.
Right.
On the next slide, that's correct.
Yeah, but let's go to the next slide on slide nine for the towns. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Dina. I was, I had a thousand emails with you today trying to get those in. And so I'm just really pleased that, you know, if, if we're able to, to get these funding levels. This is, to me, really important as, as a commissioner with towns in my district, that these funds get to the people in the district. And, and so I think through these help centers is the best way to actually reach, you know, the grassroots people who really need the assistance. So I'm really appreciative we're able to get those recommendations in there. So, so let me say thank you to you for that, and, and also thank you to all the folks who helped me pull those numbers together in the towns. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Coughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, this was a, a great presentation, and I, I don't have any further questions. I felt it was very thorough, and I'm satisfied. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Fuller.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to say that I'm very gratified by this presentation and this expected proposal to us. I think it hits a lot of, a lot of the points that we've talked about. In particular, I like the fact that we are providing support and assistance for our municipalities, our towns around the county. I really, really do support that. I think that's a, that's an important thing for us to be doing. And I hope that we'll hear from Pineville, which I notice is missing from this list. I hope we'll hear from them because we want to support them as well. The, the, the question I would have would be two questions. One is whether, if we decide at our next meeting that we are going to require masks or face coverings in Mecklenburg County, could we use this COVID money to help support providing masks to people, whether free or, or at some reduced price? Would we be able to use these funds for that?
Well, the answer is yes. There is a slide in the presentation, if I can get back to it, that there is a million dollars. Yes, if you go back to slide eight.
Yes, I see that.
There is, there is funding set aside specifically for a community-wide distribution of personal protection equipment, which includes masks, Commissioner Fuller.
Okay, that's, that was really my precise question, because usually people have been using PPE to reflect equipment for healthcare workers, right? The N ninety-five masks and so on. But, but if we require face coverings slash masks, maybe they wouldn't have to be N ninety-five masks, but nevertheless could be face coverings. But you think we could, we could support both things?
Based on the guidance and this listing factors the discussion from the last board meeting, where you discussed looking at options to make sure that we can be in a position to provide PPEs, in particular masks, to residents throughout the community.
Okay, that's great. I think that'll really be helpful.
Commissioner Fuller, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the million dollars that's in this slide is dedicated solely to providing masks to the community. It's not to provide N ninety-fives to first responders or to the healthcare community.
Okay, that's very important.
This is community-based.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. And then the last question I had was, going back to slide six, when you talked about considering other funding sources, can you give me a little more color on that? I see that these various entities do have CARES Act funding, but particularly with respect to the city of Charlotte, CMS, and CPCC. What kinds of options are there to, you know, to collaborate with these entities about, about their CARES Act money?
In particular, we want to be certain that we're minimizing any duplication of efforts. One of the areas that come to mind that has been submitted for consideration is the digital divide. And we know that the city of Charlotte is considering investments in that area. And pending the guidance, we want to make sure that we coordinate any efforts regarding investments in digital divide with them so that it's a, a collaboration as opposed to duplication of investments specific to investing in the digital divide. The same with CMS, as discussed earlier about investments that meet guidance, that is in the education arena. Again, we want to collaborate to minimize duplication. So that's really what that comes down to with respect to each funding pot having a different set of guidance. But we want to make sure that we just maximize all the dollars.
That, that makes perfect sense to me, and so I hope we're moved forward with this. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Scarborough.
I have been listening attentively, and I have no questions. Both of my questions were answered by people who were asking questions. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Powell.
The first thing I want to say is thank you. I feel like everyone's voices were heard, and I'm especially thankful for all of the input from the towns and, and incorporating those into the presentation tonight. So my, my question is, you know, I see under examples of investments that require additional planning, which is slide ten. It's something that I'd like to hear a little bit more about because we have such a need for small businesses. So, Dina or Michael Bryan, if you'd like to speak to that.
So, you know, small business assistance is really interesting because, and we're trying to figure this out, and Scarlett's, you know, has been doing a lot of research on this. There's, there's, the federal guidance says that you can provide grants to small businesses. But on the other side, there's a, a, a paper that came out from the school of government that says in North Carolina, you cannot use these dollars to provide grants for small businesses. They're completely, they're completely reversed. And so we just need to make sure that when we do something like that, that we're on strong legal ground, that we don't, because the worst thing that could happen is we spend this money and, you know, we get audited and we get jammed up and we have to pay money back. We don't want to do that. We just want to make sure we're in, on strong legal footing. Mental health supports is a really good idea, but we're just trying to figure out what are the good, what are the best providers that we can utilize to be able to provide these funds to, and to make sure that when, again, when we get audited on the backend, that we're going to have the documentation that we need to be able to support the work that we did. And so these are the kinds of things that we need to make sure that we have the documentation in place so that if we get audited, we can support the expenditures, and that's the stuff that needs additional planning.
I really appreciate, because I can tell, like, every concern that I've heard from my constituents and my colleagues is listed here. So I, I appreciate how thorough this is, and I, I feel very hopeful about it, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first thank Mr. Bryant and his team for the work that you have done along with our manager. I don't think there's any question that we've asked that they have not been able to answer today. So if you go back to page ten for me, please, and I'm, I'm concerned about my senior citizens making sure that their needs are met through whatever means we can provide. Also, along with work, workforce development, preparing people to be able to take care of themselves even after this is over. The other piece is working families. How do we help working families to become stable and to provide stability for our children? The other one is I want to know how much have we spent on housing for homelessness and anything that we have spent as it relates to food, security, all of the above, that we have actually spent for our homeless citizens in Mecklenburg County? My concern is still, if we're spending the kind of money I'm hearing, why aren't we able, we may not can do it with this money here, providing use of old warehouses to develop them into housing for our people, if possible? But if we cannot do that, I still want to know how much money has been spent for the homeless in this process and during this period? And again, let me thank Mr. Bryant, let me thank our manager, and let me say thank you to our county commissioners who have dwelled, and it's almost eleven o'clock, I guess, or ten thirty, with our going through the business of the county. And I want this public to know that's what we are about. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Girrell.
Michael, can you pull up slide eight, please? Yeah, can you speak to the community engagement piece? So we're talking about design strategies and specifically initiatives for our high-risk populations. How, how is, how is that different from the, or, or just tell me what the thinking is relative to what we're already doing, what Gibby's doing already around those initiatives with high-risk communities and, and populations?
Sure, there's a couple of things there that this five hundred thousand dollars will go towards funding. One is a communication plan that will include boots on the ground, as well as radio advertisements and things like that for this high-risk population. And then also, we received proposals that will target certain races such as Hispanics. There's also proposals regarding immigrants to look at designing brochures and translating them to their native tongue to make sure that we're getting the word out in different ways.
So I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to over-communicating, but to me, it seems like, and, and the reason why I wanted to focus on this, it, it seems like there may be some redundancy there. So I just asked for us to, to take a look at it because that's, that's fairly close or similar to what Gibby's doing in our Hispanic and African-American communities with the level of engagement that is going on as well. So, you know, I would just suggest we guard against any sort of redundancy because if we can use those funds in, in other areas and bolster up some other areas, I mean, it, it may be difficult. But I, I do want to say thank you for, for the presentation. I thought it was excellent. And I could certainly see where our suggestions were certainly incorporated. So, Dina, thank you for pulling that together, and Michael, you and your team. As it relates to working with our partners in the city and, and CMS, I know digital divide was certainly on some of, or recommendations. So I would love to hear more about that and give recommendations. So I would love to hear more about that and give visibility to what that looks like and maybe colleagues on the city have planned if that's possible, because I think that's really, really important as we go through this. And we're trying to stand folk up. It's going to be important that that access and level of access is available throughout. And also, I think when we talk about digital divide, I'd like to, you know, make sure that you know, there's a conversation where we pull the towns in with that as well. So but great presentation. Thank you for the information. I think it's an excellent start. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank Dina and staff for doing exactly what I expected you would do. This demonstrates just how in tune staff is with what's going on as it relates to COVID. One of the things that I wanted to share, and maybe you guys have already done this, is that while the money needs to be spent by December, I would feel better knowing that it would have implications long after December. So to any extent you can use the funds that will have long-term effects overall, I think would really be beneficial to this community. Given the fact that CMS got thirty million, I'm certainly interested in knowing how they spent that, given that we've given them five hundred and twenty seven years. And then the last question I had is a real simple one. What's the contingency for spending the contingency? Five million dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah, that's an amount that, based on the thirty-nine million dollar allotment that we've received and the investments that have been identified, we wanted to make sure that we have a reasonable amount that is available should there be any changes in the guidance, which could include utilizing these funds to offset revenue loss, that we have that setting aside available for use. So we kind of backed into it based off of identifying funding for the investments already are earmarked and then those projected expenses going to the end of the calendar year of December thirtieth.
Okay. And then I did have one last question. It was based on one of the slides that Susan Rodriguez McDowell had you put up. And it showed the difference in terms of what was covered and what was not covered. Am I to assume then, I think that was it, one before, not that one, right there. Am I to assume that what was, no, I think it was one before that. What was not covered is what the county has been responsible for? We spent out of our fund balance?
Yes, and we're looking at other options to offset some of these expenses that may not necessarily be eligible for the coronavirus relief fund. For example, the hotels is a hundred percent reimbursable with FEMA. Then also Starla's looking at other options to offset some of these expenses that are eligible as well.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's a commissioner who simply needs a second round, just identify yourself.
Chairman, I have, I just want to, just going back to that slide, the reason that the small businesses isn't covered isn't that correct? That, and that money's coming back to us eventually at some point? Isn't that right?
Yes, that's correct because it's a loan.
Okay, was that it, sir?
That's it, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fuller.
Yes, sir. I just have a quick question based on that question. So is it fact that it's a loan versus grant that's the issue, or could there be forgivable loans that could be covered by the CARES Act? Or under North Carolina law?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Starla to address that because she's been doing all the due diligence on this.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Dina. Commissioner Fuller, if the money is going to remain or be returned back to the county and not completely extended by the end of the year.
It goes back to the government.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think I was cut off. If the money is going to remain with the county or be returned and still be with the county still at the end of the year, then that would cause a problem that we would either have to pay it back, return it to US Treasury. And so that's why those funds aren't eligible because they would still be, they wouldn't be spent if they're returned in any way.
Maybe I misunderstood Commissioner Fuller's question, but I thought he asked if it wasn't going to be returned to us, could it be used by the business?
Well, so then that would probably be defined as a grant with the guidance and with, for the federal side of things, that's not where the question about the grant comes into play. That really is a question that we have with the interpretation with the state constitution and whether or not counties can provide grants to businesses. And that's where, as the county manager stated, we have some conflicts in interpretation on that side when it comes to grants.
When, and when you say conflicts in interpretation, you mean what constitutes a grant?
No, we have a guidance from the School of Government that that indicates grants are not allowable under, under the constitution, the counties to have the authority to give money to small businesses, grants. And we can't do that. However, the Treasury guidance allows grants because of course that's nationally done. So under the Treasury guidance, grants are allowed per the School of Government's interpretation on the state side, grants are not allowed. We have checked in with the Office of State Budget and Management and they've kind of taken a a hands-off approach to that interpretation for counties. And so that's where the, the water gets a little muddy with which interpretation is the one that's going to, to move forward for most of the counties in North Carolina.
May I clarify, Commissioner, under the constitution as well as case decisions, if a county gives money to a business or an individual, it would violate the state constitution because it is considered an exclusive amalgamment. And we would have significant problems. The federal law is one, but if the state gets it, we are bound by state law and the constitution will not allow it.
And so what, how does that differ then between our business investment grants? Isn't that kind of, I mean, it's not a grant directly, but it's it's kind of forgiveness of taxes to some degree. Is there anything similar that we could do?
You get the money back by the tax incentive over the years. That's why you have callback provision. If they don't meet the conditions that you, you're able to get that money back.
I see. Okay.
All right. So, so let me, let me, let me, let me one follow up to that, to that concern. And the question is, and this is where I have the issue. The money came from the federal government to the, to the county, not through the state. So if it was state money, I can understand why the state rule would apply. If the money comes from the federal government and the federal government says it's allowed, my question is, why is it not allowed?
It's allowed as long as it's governed by the federal law. Once you get it as a local government, the federal rules will not apply. If it stays with us, as what you've heard thus far, is that if you don't use it, you'd have to return it to the federal government. That's their condition.
So then maybe we need to seek some assistance from our federal legislators that would then give us the authority to do that.
We need to, we need to get clarity on that. That's why it was under the bucket that says requires additional planning because it's just very muddy right now. We need to, we need to find the clear path to how we get there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, thank you for that, that presentation. So at this time.
So Chair Dunlap, on the, on the items that we indicated that we could move forward with quickly, we're going to proceed if that's okay with the board. And then the, the items that require more planning will come back on the seventh and give you some additional information. But I want to be able to proceed with the items that we feel like we can go forward with today, if that's okay with the board.
That's fine. Let's do it officially so that there's.
I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Count Commissioner Harden, second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Harden. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. Thank you, Dina, you and staff for, for all your hard work on that. I really do appreciate it. So next on our agenda, we will move to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve those things that were not pulled from the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Lee. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough? Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
Okay, the chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. Well, now move to those items that were pulled from consent. Item twenty sixty-one ninety-six, budget amendment, county assessor's office. Carry forward of unspent funds, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. Isn't it ironic? We were just talking about unspent funds and what have you. And the rationale for pulling this for information for the general public and for those who have called me and asked me some questions about the assessor's office. So those funds that's coming back to us will be spent, it said laptops and other necessities that's needed to help run the process. The other piece to it was that the remaining funds would either be used for data cleaning, a process for analyzing data using multiple regression and it goes on to clarify that in the statement. So I so move, Mr. Chairman, that we do that with these funds. Coming with the assess, unspent funds coming to, from the assessor's office.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there a second?
Scarborough, second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough to approve item twenty sixteen ninety-six. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. The next consent item is twenty sixty-two oh one FY twenty-one funding plan for DSS home and community care block grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I pull this because it talks about community care block grants. And what this means for DSS, it will be providing for home and community use for those grants that if we are able to secure them. And one is dealing with home aid service, transportation service, congregant meals, home-delivered meals, senior centers in operations, adult daycare and day health. All of this will be included in this grant, this home, the community and home block grant, which will serve as our seniors and the general public. So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there a second? Okay. Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cotham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. So the final item on our agenda is the commissioners' report. You have up to three minutes to share information or make comments. We'll start with Commissioner Powell.
I, I do not have any comments except thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lee?
I just want to thank my dear friend and my brother, who is now a part of the county commissioner, for coming up with his resolution that dealt specifically with specifics as relates to race and healthcare for our people in Mecklenburg County. The second piece is that the Health Committee has put out a newsletter and I hope that each of you have received a copy. And I want to thank Mr. Tropman. I also want to thank Village Heartbeat and others who have helped to make it successful as relates to the newsletter. We'll be getting one once a quarter and especially to our manager, Dina. And I cannot close out with saying to our mothers who are mothers of sons and black sons and black brothers in this community and the struggle that we're having across this country, which is a crisis that out of this, I pray that some good will come, that life will not continue as it is, as we bury and grieve every day, all day about our children yet unborn to be born, to come into a world that says to you, based upon your color, you're not accepted. So I say to you, I cannot breathe until you get off of my neck. And I say to us, black lives do matter. Thank you.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just say that I want to lift up two things. The, the first thing is tomorrow in Marshall Park at four PM, Black Men United are coming together for a rally. Mr. Chairman, you've been asked to bring greetings and I appreciate you being available, but it's a sign that black men want to stand up in this community, denounce racism, and talk about and lend our voices to the discussion around interaction with law enforcement by black men in the disproportionate outcomes that, that we see. And so leaders with respect to all different roles in our community will come together at four o'clock. And we're asking everyone to come that will stand with us to rally and, and march and lend your voice to this effort. It's also the fifth anniversary of the Charleston Mother Emanuel shooting. And Councilman Malcolm Graham will give, bring remarks as his sister was a victim in that tragedy with eight others that were tragically gunned down due to racism and hate. And finally, I want to say, Mr. Chairman, that Commissioner Lee received a racist hate letter and I want the community to know this. And I wanted Commissioner Lee to know and understand that I've said this before, I'll say it again, there is no greater voice in this community for particularly black people. And I want her to know that we all stand with her. We have her back. We appreciate it. We stand on her shoulders as she's someone who's been a soldier in the field for many years. And it's a shame that we still come to this point where people do what they do without respect for those that we should certainly respect. And Commissioner Lee, I want you to know that you're not standing alone. And we are here for you. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner Harden?
I think she lost her internet connection.
Okay, Commissioner Harden?
Thank you, Chairman. And yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Jarrell about Commissioner Lee. You, you do not stand alone. And I didn't know that you had received another letter, but that's, that's horrible. And we, you know, we stand with you as your colleagues, Commissioner, and, and I'm sorry about that. There is no greater voice. I would, I would agree with Commissioner Jarrell on that. I'd also want to recognize that we have, we have three dads on our Board of County Commissioners and it's Father's Day. I'd also want to recognize that we have, uh, we have three, uh, dads on our Board of County Commissioners, and it's Father's Day this weekend. And I want to just make a shout out to all of the fathers in our community. My dad's in our community, and I certainly want to, you know, give him, uh, all kinds of appreciation and, and I, and I, and I, I want to say how much I appreciate that we're, the things that we're doing. You know, we have, uh, we have seniors dying alone because of COVID, and it's a real sad situation. And to be isolated and to, um, to die alone. And so the, 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 we allocated tonight and everything that Gibby's doing in the Health Department to, to improve the outcomes of seniors, uh, in law, on our long-term care nursing home facilities, is really making a difference. And, um, when you have, you know, you know, ninety-three percent of the deaths happening, uh, you know, in one population, um, I, I appreciate the chairman saying, you know, what are we doing strategically to focus in on that? Because that's, that is where, uh, a lot of the suffering is happening. And so I, I, I'm, I'm very appreciative to this board and for the county manager and for county staff for everything they've done to help those, um, those in our community who are seniors. So thank you and happy Father's Day.
Commissioner McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't have any further comments at this time. I'm, I'm having a little trouble with my connection, so, um, uh, that concludes my comments.
Okay, Commissioner Cuthem?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I join my colleagues, uh, in saying to Commissioner Lee that I am so very sorry that, yet again, how, and goodness, how many have there been that you received another hateful racist letter? I, it reminded me of, I've been trying to read Reverend Barber's comments in the last few weeks, and he, he used the phrase about the long train of abuse demands change. And, um, that's the, I feel like you've been on this long train of abuse. Um, and we have had too many deaths demand change and Black Lives Matter protests demanded. And, um, but, you know, you, you are the, you talk a lot about District Two being the most powerful, but, but that is because of you, Commissioner Lee. Um, so I salute you and, um, I, I do wish Happy Father's Day to my colleagues and to our staff. Uh, and that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to say, uh, this evening, um, uh, what continuing pride I have to serve on this board with, uh, with my eight other commissioners. Um, we've done something significant this evening, and we've been doing some pretty heavy lifting uh, on our board, on this county commission for our community. Stories yet still to be told about the investments that we've called for, the actions that we've taken, that the consequences we're going to see in the next months and years to come. You know, we've had, um, a time, a season of protest, uh, that is very appropriate, needed, and a cry by our community, uh, about the conditions under which we live. And who would have thought that even since the murder of George Floyd, since then, how many of us have seen various videos and incidents that have occurred, uh, even in, uh, the time since the George Floyd death? Police officers continuing to put their knees on the necks of black men in our communities. Black men still being shot dead for no other reason than being drunk at a restaurant parking lot. The needs are great. Um, I'm just hopeful, prayerful that somehow this is different. Our protests are being heard. And we have people in office who are responding, finally, to what the community has been crying out for, for decades. You know, I always say that we need to protest, we need to speak out. When everybody goes home from the protest, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And that work is not sexy. You're not going to get credit for doing that work. But it absolutely has to happen. You can cry out about our police force and culture of the police force, but the only way it's going to change is by elected leaders making changes, demanding changes, accepting nothing less than changing. And that's the work that we're doing. And I think it's so important, the work that we're doing, and that we have to keep at it. Keep at it no matter how much it seems in the dark that we're doing it. Uh, so I'm just proud to be on a board that sees the importance of doing that, and I just thank my colleagues for uh, being a part of this effort, um, um, and God bless you all.
Commissioner Scarborough?
I believe that if our people return from their wicked ways, then we'll hear from heaven and change the land. I, I, I believe in that scripture. I've seen that one many times, but I will tell you this. Until we decide that we are going to turn from our wicked ways, not us personally, but yes, yes, Charlotte and the community, we must turn from these wicked ways, and then we will hear from heaven. We're not going to hear anything as long as we're doing what we're doing in Mecklenburg County. So thank you for, for the evening. I, I've enjoyed hearing from everyone, and I think that we can move on if we believe, then we, we must put our beliefs in practice. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, real quickly, um, I, I'm reminded of a conversation I had with my son just a few short weeks ago, where he reminded me of a conversation that he and I had when I was teaching him how to drive. And he talked about how upset he was with me when I would yell at him because he didn't come to a complete stop at a stop sign. And then he said to me, he said, I really understand it now, because you didn't want me to give police officers any reason, any reason to stop me. And so it-
That's right.
It, it, it made me feel so good to know that he finally understood the message that I was sending him, uh, even at, at age sixteen, having to have those conversations with our boys and girls that nobody else has to have with them. Um, he sent me a video last night about an incident that happened in this community. A, a person with a disability being stopped for no reason, ended up being taged and put on the ground and, uh, the thing about it was the officer's own camera convicted him, and he was fired immediately. So a, as Trevor suggested, w- we're concerned about George Floyd and what we've seen recently. But if you pay attention to national news, even with what's going on, it has not stopped what's going on in this country. And so we've got to be vigilant and, and, and make sure that we raise our voices in order to demand change. Um, so I, I'm asking everybody's support to help us do that. And then lastly, um, had a good meeting last week, I think. Uh, I'm looking forward to some more good news about our ability to increase affordable housing in this community. Dean, I hope you got that phone call or did you make that phone call? Um, but, uh, I am, I am really excited about that, that opportunity that we're going to share with our board, uh, in the coming weeks. Um, so with that being said, I think that concludes our meeting. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by- Move by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Harden. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Hello, yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye and goodbye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
I, and I and goodbye.
The chair votes, aye, Madam Clerk?
That is a unanimous yes vote to adjourn.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.